would get free admission if they arrived in costume. And before long, every screening of the film was accompanied by a live fan cast, acting out the parts actors were playing on screen.
Joining the councilman for the declaration of Rocky Horror Picture Show Day was the film's producer, Lou Adler.
The reason that this film started and has never ended is because of Tim Curry.
The film star, Tim Curry, remained in good spirits despite suffering a stroke three years ago.
I'm so glad that our day is so close to my favorite American holiday, Halloween.
Councilman Corretts pointed out that the film's appeal was more than simply being a fan favorite. For some, it was community.
The film has also been helpful in the gay and bisexual rights movement, the acceptance of fabulous drag queens, and has provided an essential community for people who otherwise may feel themselves on the fringe of society.
Despite being considered a financial failure in 1975, the Rocky Horror Picture Show has gone on to earn over $450 million to date, adjusted for inflation. From Los Angeles City Hall, this is Rich Samuels for L.A. This Week.
Rocky Horror began life on the London stage in 1973. While a birthday for one of the most successful bus lines ever, city leaders and riders were on hand to celebrate the 10th anniversary of the Orange Line, and Anna Marcos takes us there.
Now that's the way to celebrate a ribbon cutting, in this case, a banner cutting, as the Valley's Orange Line celebrates its 10th birthday.
The Orange Line today that we celebrate the 10th anniversary of running is now arguably America's most successful bus rapid transit line, period.
It was somewhat of an experiment as well. We'll put it out, nobody, you know, at that point uses rapid transit in the West Valley because there was no rapid transit, but when you put it in there, it blew up.
The Orange Line runs from Chatsworth through Warner Center all the way to the Red Line Connection at Universal City, and it's become quite popular.
Why do I use it? To get around to like restaurants and all my local, you know, businesses, mama papa shops and, you know, the malls.
So we use it to save on gas, to get around the city.
When it first opened, the Orange Line was expected to get about 7,000 riders. Instead, it got about 16,000 riders after the very first day, and since then, ridership has almost doubled, forcing city leaders to look at other options to expand.
Among the options, longer buses.
This is a single articulated bus. A double articulated bus would add 50% more.
That's like three parts.
It's exactly right.
City leaders who took a celebratory ride on the bus are also considering turning the bus line into a rail line. They are proposing a transportation tax measure on the ballot next year to pay for the improvements.
But now it's our job to take it further, to the next level, such as converting the Orange Line to rail.
It's a great example of creating new mobility options for our region.
And above all, people in the Valley love this thing. Happy Birthday, Orange Line.
And what better way for a bus line to spend a birthday than by being people's favorite ride? I'm Anna Marcos for L.A. This Week.
City leaders say another future plan involves building a rail line from the valley to the west side through the Sepulveda Pass. Well, Councilman David Rue is one of the newest members to take seat in City Hall. Rasha Goel has more on the ambitious goals he's creating to strengthen ties between government and the community.
He's been in office for over 130 days and has already worked some magic. We now sit down and talk to Councilmember David Rue of the 4th District and find out what else he's got in store for his constituents. Let's go learn some more.
And in the 130 days, we were able to do a couple of exciting things. Most recently, we just launched our website, and we tried to make it as interactive as possible, where we could get a lot of feedback from the community.
The website is easy to use and allows for residents to give feedback by participating in surveys, see a list of upcoming meetings, or engaging in a conversation. Councilman Rue also talks about the discretionary funds advisory task force, which is made up of nine community members from the district.
What I promised to do is open up my books to let the community know exactly how much money is coming into my office, the discretionary funds, and what they're being spent on. And going forward, I wanted to ask the community to make recommendations on what we should prioritize on and how we should spend these funds.
For the councilman, transparency with the community is a priority.
Everything that we're doing in my office is, starts with transparency. So when I talk about discretionary funds task force, it's so I could be transparent with the community about my funds. When I talk about the website and making it interactive, it's again about being as transparent as possible. And transparency is key, because as you've seen, it's not just in the city of L.A., but it's nationwide. There's a lot of mistrust towards government.
And that's why, when it even comes to fixing things like the sidewalk, Councilman Rue is going to the people.
So I'm engaging the community members to ask them, if I could only fix one or two sidewalks in your neighborhood, which one or two should we fix? Can you help me prioritize? I mean, who knows more about your neighborhood than you?
Tell us what's happening with the Hollywood sign. It's obviously a popular item here, living in Los Angeles.
Unfortunately, what that has caused is congestion in the neighborhoods. There are no public facilities, so you have people urinating, defecating, throwing out cigarette butts during this high fire season. I mean, it creates a lot of ancillary problems. So, I support tourism. Tourism, a huge industry for our Los Angeles economy. However, when it comes to the Hollywood sign, I've been approaching it as a public safety issue.
And lastly, the impact of development is also a controversial issue in the 4th District.
So it's about engaging the community, and the community having a process saying, having the ability to weigh in on their thoughts on these development projects. And to that end, I mean, I said, I will not, I pledge not to take any contributions from developers. First, because there's so much distrust from the community that I want to show them that I'm coming from a clean slate, that I'm not going to be influenced by them. And what's the easiest way not to be influenced by them? By not taking their contributions. And second, we went further with our website to be interactive. We also said, anytime I meet with a developer, we will let you know. So we post the meetings with the developers, so they know who we met with, what information we got, and we share that information, which is all public information, by the way.
Here's a chance for you to be involved with Council District 4. Reporting for L.A. This Week, I'm Rasha Goel.
Councilman Rue's website is daviderue.com. While city officials unveil a new streetlight that helps Angelino stay connected, the mayor shows his support for the radio industry, and a middle school in North Hollywood honors one of their own. All these stories in City Beat. The nation's first smart pole streetlight at Gower in Santa Monica was unveiled recently by L.A. Mayor Eric Arsetti. The Philips Smart Poles are equipped with energy-efficient LED lighting and wireless technology. 100 streetlights will be installed across Los Angeles over the next year. 500 additional poles will be added over the next four years. Officials say the smart poles will deliver enhanced, reliable wireless broadband coverage to businesses, visitors, and citizens by integrating Ericsson's small cell technology into standard city streetlights, improving the wireless network for Angelino smartphones in dense urban areas.
Nothing is more important to our daily life than how quickly we can connect. It means people can apply for jobs, they can check their email, they can connect with their family, they can do the work that fuels both the personal and business life of our city.
The mayor was also the keynote speaker at the recent Broadcasters Association Outstanding Achievement in Radio Advertising Awards luncheon, held at the Sheraton Universal Hotel in Universal City. The luncheon honored radio advertisers that support the industry. The mayor, who co-hosts his own segment called Ask the Mayor on KNX 1070 AM, said that radio plays an important role in our everyday lives.
Radio is this great connector of us to the community here in Los Angeles.
Madison Middle School in North Hollywood dedicated its gym to alumni and retired Los Angeles Lakers guard Gail Goodrich, who played on the Lakers from 1971 to 1972, during a time when the team won 33 straight games and produced four members of the NBA Hall of Fame, including James Worthy, who was also on hand. City Councilman Paul Krikorian also presented Goodrich with a city certificate.
It's a phenomenal achievement. It's a phenomenal demonstration of greatness.
It really doesn't get any better than this.
San Pedro prepares for disaster, the kind where neighborhood volunteers do most of the heavy lifting. Gil Reyes shows us in this CERT training exercise.
The rescuers in the green vests are not firefighters, nor are they law enforcement, the regular civilians like most of our neighbors, ready to serve when disaster strikes.
Their strength in community, their strength in preparation, and their strength in our allied agencies, and that's what this is about tonight.
More than 100 volunteers take part in CERT training in San Pedro. CERT stands for Community Emergency Response Teams. This exercise, a simulated explosion at the port's World Cruise Center, provides valuable lessons.
In medical response, and triage, and fire suppression, and search and rescue.
In a real disaster, police and firefighters might be too busy to respond to emergencies in your area. If so, it's CERT to the rescue. Volunteers must undergo a 21-hour training course led by L.A. City firefighters to help ensure neighborhoods will be safe during a fire, flood, or terrorist strike.
And even if we just help our block, or if we live in an apartment building, even if we just help everybody in that building, make sure they're safe and tend to their wounds should they have any, we're ahead of the game.
This drill is a lesson on prioritizing, deciding who needs first aid and hospitalization, and who can wait. Volunteers from St. Mary's Hospital donned the Hollywood makeup to make the scenario more realistic.
I really do think this training is important. I've never been to a training like this, so whatever knowledge I can gain from this will help me out in the future.
And possibly save lives when the unexpected happens. In San Pedro, Gil Reyes for L.A. This Week.
CERT is offering training if you want to volunteer. Find out more at cert-la.com. While it's an annual tradition that puts the spotlight on African culture and brings communities together through art and dance. Dancer Amber Tell gets into the rhythm of the music. Her high-energy and upbeat dance comes from Guinea-West Africa. She chose to perform it because the dance not only represents her African heritage, but it also has special meaning for her.
We did it to celebrate the balance between the mothers and the daughters, and to express femininity.
Tell was just one of many performers, dancers, artists, and musicians who showcased their talents and paid tribute to African culture at the Lamert Park Village African Art and Music Festival.
I grew up in this neighborhood, so I feel it's my responsibility to come out and show support, you know, each time we have this festival.
The annual festival began in 2009 and is the signature event of the Lamert Park Village Group, whose mission is to promote culture, commerce, and community. And there were certainly plenty of culture on hand, from a variety of African artwork and artifacts, to boldly patterned clothing, vibrant jewelry, and of course, the soulful sound of some dynamic voices. Sponsored by Council District 10 and other community groups and organizations, festival organizers say the event not only seeks to highlight African culture, but also to broaden the understanding of our diverse backgrounds. Pershing Square transforms into a winter wonderland. Some of the latest cars on the market roll into the L.A. Convention Center, and a murder mystery at the Getty. All this and this week's Things to Do. It's the coolest place for the hottest holiday happenings. Holiday Ice Ring in Pershing Square kicks off its amazing 18th season for ice skating under the sun and stars in the heart of downtown Los Angeles. Open every day now until January 18, 2016. Encircled by towering skyscrapers, the stunning pop-up icecape transforms Pershing Square into a winter wonderland with a host of free community and special events. The Yuletide traditions continue with DJ Thursday nights, skating exhibitions, Single in the City Skate Night, a Snoopy on Ice showcase, the Winter Holiday Festival, and the Polar Bear Skate, among others. Join the fun at Pershing Square located at 532 South Olive Street. For more, visit holidayiceringdowntownla.com. Tokyo drifts into the Convention Center for the 10-day L.A. Auto Show with cars that would make even Bond rule. If you're a car nerd, get behind the wheel to test drive one of the cherry rides with celebrities meet and greet at the manufacturer exhibits. With world and North American debuts from BMW, Chevrolet, Jaguar, and more, rev up for the machines of the future. The L.A. Auto Show rolls into the L.A. Convention Center located at 1201 South Figueroa Street starting Friday, November 20 through November 29. It's the Watson Adventures Murder at the Getty scavenger hunt. A murdered curator has left behind a cryptic trail of clues connected with secrets and works at the Getty Center in Los Angeles. As your team gathers answers about the art, you'll piece together a sordid tale revolving around a planned purchase of a rare painting by Leonardo da Vinci. To solve the mystery, you'll have to crack a secret code left in the victim's appointment calendar. Can you figure out who done it? The scavenger hunt takes place November 21st from 4:30 to 7:00 p.m. at the Getty Center in Los Angeles. For more information, visit watsonadventures.com. And that's a look at some things to do. Well, that's going to do it for this edition. I'm Yana Kay, and from all of us here at L.A. This Week, thanks for joining us. A reminder that you can catch us online at lacityview.org. You can also follow and like us on Facebook. We'll see you back here next week for more of L.A. This Week.
Good morning. Today is Tuesday. We're about to begin our meeting. Good morning. Today is Tuesday, November 17th, and we are listening to the Ali City Council Meeting. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Bonin, Buscaino, Sadio, Inglender, Fuentes, Harris, Dawson, Weezer, Corret, Correa, Martinez, Oferro, Price, Rue, Weston, ten members present in a corner, Mr. President.
First order of business, Madam Clerk?
Approve of the minutes.
Councilmember Oferro moves. Mr. Weezer seconds. Next item?
Commingual resolutions for approval.
Mr. Bonin moves, and Mr. Corret seconds. Next item?
Madam President, today is Tuesday, and now by the time for the flag salute.
Members, please all rise. Members of our audience for our flag salute. This morning, I'd like for us to take a moment of silence as we remember all the victims of the brutal attacks this past week. We can all bow our heads. Thank you very much. And Mr. Rue, will you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Rue. Madam Clerk, let's run through the agenda.
Madam President, there's a request to continue items four until November 24th.
Without objection, that'd be the order.
Items one through four are items noticed for public hearing. The Department of Building and Safety reports that the following items have been received and filed for the following reasons. Item one B, F, and H have been paid in full. Item one E has been rescinded by the department, and item one I has been partially rescinded and the balance paid. Also, there's a request for item one K, the lien amount to be reduced to $1,951.71.
Without objection, that'd be the order. Any cards on any of those items, Madam Clerk?
Yes, cards on items one, two, and three.
One, two, and three. Are there any other specials, members? Let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Item twenty-three is a closed session item. Do you wish to hold it on the desk?
Yes, let's hold item twenty-three on the desk.
Madam President, that brings council to presentations or items called special.
Thank you very much. Mr. Oferro, are you ready for your presentation, sir?
Good morning, Madam President and colleagues. I am joined by Mike Bonin. This morning, we are here to congratulate a very important group who have just finished a course, the Transgender Civic Engagement Course, through the Human Relations Commission and the Mayor's Office. Please give them a big round of applause. Colleagues, I want to thank all of you for helping me celebrate this wonderful accomplishment. This course is a catalyst for personal growth, an inspiration for service in the transgender and every other community in Los Angeles. I want to thank Patricia Villasenor, Executive Director of the City's Human Relations Commission, and Mayor Eric Garcetti for organizing a course of civic engagement and leadership for the transgender community. Earlier, I had the great privilege of acknowledging every member who had completed this course, the first of its kind in the city of Los Angeles, but certainly not the last. It is important for all of us to be a voice within the LGBT community, and I know that we're all allies together in leading the fight for full equality for every individual, no matter what letter of LGBT you represent. The transgendered community is often the most marginalized of all communities simply because of a refusal to deny one's own identity. The transgendered community might be the most misunderstood minority group of all, and in the long journey for full equality, it is important to make sure that everyone is included in every community across our great city. I applaud all of you gathered around Mike and I for your involvement in this community through this civics and leadership course. Standing here at the Diaz this morning is an outstanding group of public servants, and again, they deserve our applause as we celebrate November as Transgender Awareness Month. Applause. And now, I would like to invite our colleague, Mike Bonin, to say a few words. Mike?
Thank you, colleagues. Good morning. I want to thank Mr. Oferro for bringing this presentation forward today and for acknowledging the importance of this month, and I want to thank those standing behind us for their leadership and their engagement. You know, when the Supreme Court ruled in favor of marriage equality nationwide, there's a lot of folks, really even in the LGBT community, who thought that the struggle for civil rights was over, that we'd won. That's absolutely wrong. One, there are still many places in this country where LGBT equality is not realized. There are still many places where discrimination is legal and we don't have an Employment and Nondiscrimination Act nationwide. But more importantly is the T community in LGBT, which is so often forgotten, so often ignored, and so often maligned. And it is extremely important for those of us who have had some personal victory in having our civil rights acknowledged over the past few years, resolve, doubly resolve, to stay engaged, to make sure that we fight for everyone of the LGBT community, especially those of us standing behind us today. We have said for so long, the acronym for the past 10 years has been LGBT. We need to change that. It needs now to be TLGB, because we need to put the T first right now, because they're the ones in the focus of the struggle. They're the ones being most discriminated against. They're the ones being most ignored, most maligned, and we need to stand with you, and we need to stand and have your backs and support you and do anything we can to make sure that your struggle is not forgotten. Thank you so much for what you've been doing. Thank you, Mitchell, for bringing this forward today.
Thank you so much, Mike. I think that TLGBT, TLGB has a nice ring to it. TLGB, thank you. We live in a world increasingly where there are forces at work, active, to deny people their freedoms and their rights to exist as who they are. So I think there's never been a better time to have this presentation. One of the leaders who has been instrumental in pushing forward the great incredible needs for the transgender community is our friend, Bambi Salcedo of the Trans Latina Coalition. Bambi?
Thank you so much, Councilmember. First, before I begin, I would like to acknowledge there are at least 22 trans individuals who have been murdered this year alone. I also would like to honor those young, trans, and gender-unconforming individuals who have taken their lives because of the ignorance that trans people continue to experience in our society in 2015. You know, I am very thankful to the city of Los Angeles, the Department of the Human Relations Commission, the Office of Councilmember Oferro, and all the people who have supported for all of us to be here today. It's important that we recognize that we, as trans people, need to be acknowledged, our existence needs to be acknowledged, and it's important that we, as a community, as citizens of the city of Los Angeles...
Good morning. Today is Tuesday. We're about to begin our meeting. Good morning. Today is Tuesday, November 17th, and we are listening to the Ali City Council Meeting. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Bonin, Buscaino, Sadio, Inglender, Fuentes, Harris, Dawson, Weezer, Corret, Correa, Martinez, Oferro, Price, Rue, Weston, ten members present in a corner, Mr. President, Madam President.
First order of business, Madam Clerk?
Approve of the minutes.
Councilmember Oferro moves. Mr. Weezer seconds. Next item?
Commingual resolutions for approval.
Mr. Bonin moves, and Mr. Corret seconds. Next item?
Madam President, today is Tuesday, and now by the time for the flag salute.
Members, please all rise. Members of our audience for our flag salute. This morning, I'd like for us to take a moment of silence as we remember all the victims of the brutal attacks this past week. We can all bow our heads. Thank you very much. And Mr. Rue, will you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Rue. Madam Clerk, let's run through the agenda.
Madam President, there's a request to continue items four until November 24th.
Without objection, that'd be the order.
Items one through four are items noticed for public hearing. The Department of Building and Safety reports that the following items have been received and filed for the following reasons. Item one B, F, and H have been paid in full. Item one E has been rescinded by the department, and item one I has been partially rescinded and the balance paid. Also, there's a request for item one K, the lien amount to be reduced to $1,951.71.
Without objection, that'd be the order. Any cards on any of those items, Madam Clerk?
Yes, cards on items one, two, and three.
One, two, and three. What are the next items?
Items five through 18 are items which public hearings have been held.
Members, any specials on items five through 18, Mr. Weezer?
Madam President, I'm not sure if you have public cards on these, but fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, and eighteen.
Very well. Are there any other specials, members? Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Items nineteen and twenty are items which public hearings have not been held. Ten votes required for consideration.
Without objection. Those items are before us. Are there any cards?
Yes, cards on item nineteen.
Members, any specials? Seeing none. Let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate
Item twenty-three is a closed session item. Do you wish to hold it on the desk?
Yes, let's hold item twenty-three on the desk.
Madam President, that brings council to presentations or items called special.
Thank you very much. Mr. Oferro, are you ready for your presentation, sir?
Good morning, Madam President and colleagues. I am joined by Mike Bonin. This morning, we are here to congratulate a very important group who have just finished a course, the Transgender Civic Engagement Course, through the Human Relations Commission and the Mayor's Office. Please give them a big round of applause. Colleagues, I want to thank all of you for helping me celebrate this wonderful accomplishment. This course is a catalyst for personal growth, an inspiration for service in the transgender and every other community in Los Angeles. I want to thank Patricia Villasenor, Executive Director of the City's Human Relations Commission, and Mayor Eric Garcetti for organizing a course of civic engagement and leadership for the transgender community. Earlier, I had the great privilege of acknowledging every member who had completed this course, the first of its kind in the city of Los Angeles, but certainly not the last. It is important for all of us to be a voice within the LGBT community, and I know that we're all allies together in leading the fight for full equality for every individual, no matter what letter of LGBT you represent. The transgendered community is often the most marginalized of all communities simply because of a refusal to deny one's own identity. The transgendered community might be the most misunderstood minority group of all, and in the long journey for full equality, it is important to make sure that everyone is included in every community across our great city. I applaud all of you gathered around Mike and I for your involvement in this community through this civics and leadership course. Standing here at the Diaz this morning is an outstanding group of public servants, and again, they deserve our applause as we celebrate November as Transgender Awareness Month. Applause. And now, I would like to invite our colleague, Mike Bonin, to say a few words. Mike?
Thank you, colleagues. Good morning. I want to thank Mr. Oferro for bringing this presentation forward today and for acknowledging the importance of this month, and I want to thank those standing behind us for their leadership and their engagement. You know, when the Supreme Court ruled in favor of marriage equality nationwide, there's a lot of folks, really even in the LGBT community, who thought that the struggle for civil rights was over, that we'd won. That's absolutely wrong. One, there are still many places in this country where LGBT equality is not realized. There are still many places where discrimination is legal and we don't have an Employment and Nondiscrimination Act nationwide. But more importantly is the T community in LGBT, which is so often forgotten, so often ignored, and so often maligned. And it is extremely important for those of us who have had some personal victory in having our civil rights acknowledged over the past few years, resolve, doubly resolve, to stay engaged, to make sure that we fight for everyone of the LGBT community, especially those of us standing behind us today. We have said for so long, the acronym for the past 10 years has been LGBT. We need to change that. It needs now to be TLGB, because we need to put the T first right now, because they're the ones in the focus of the struggle. They're the ones being most discriminated against. They're the ones being most ignored, most maligned, and we need to stand with you, and we need to stand and have your backs and support you and do anything we can to make sure that your struggle is not forgotten. Thank you so much for what you've been doing. Thank you, Mitchell, for bringing this forward today.
Thank you so much, Mike. I think that TLGBT, TLGB has a nice ring to it. TLGB, thank you. We live in a world increasingly where there are forces at work, active, to deny people their freedoms and their rights to exist as who they are. So I think there's never been a better time to have this presentation. One of the leaders who has been instrumental in pushing forward the great incredible needs for the transgender community is our friend, Bambi Salcedo of the Trans Latina Coalition. Bambi?
Thank you so much, Councilmember. First, before I begin, I would like to acknowledge there are at least 22 trans individuals who have been murdered this year alone. I also would like to honor those young, trans, and gender-unconforming individuals who have taken their lives because of the ignorance that trans people continue to experience in our society in 2015. You know, I am very thankful to the city of Los Angeles, the Department of the Human Relations Commission, the Office of Councilmember Oferro, and all the people who have supported for all of us to be here today. It's important that we recognize that we, as trans people, need to be acknowledged, our existence needs to be acknowledged, and it's important that we, as a community, as citizens of the city of Los Angeles... It's important that we recognize that we, as trans people, need to be acknowledged, our existence need to be acknowledged, and it's important that we, as a community, as citizens of the city of Los Angeles, stand together into making sure that the livelihood of trans people continue to improve. You know, as we walked through the stores a few minutes ago, I saw remarks, I saw looks, and I saw comments that people were making about each other, about our presence here. But I'm here to tell you, to all of you, that our existence has been present for many centuries, and we are not going anywhere. And you are going to continue to see our presence everywhere, including here. And so please keep that in mind as we continue to move forward, as we continue to grow as a community. And please understand that we need you to stand with us. And if you are truly stand for human rights and human, and civil rights, then you are going to support for the trans community to be in a better place in our society. Once again, I want to thank all of council members who are here. I want to thank Councilmember O'Farrell for standing with us. Obviously, Councilmember Bonin for being here with us. And all of the people who made this possible, including Patricia Villasenor, Leo, donde esta Leo? Oh, there you go. And obviously, my dear friend Freddie, Freddie. All of the people who have made this possible. But most importantly, I want for all of us to recognize our brothers and sisters who are standing here before us. So can I ask you to please give a meaningful and intentional round of applause for all of us who completed this session? Thank you once again for the opportunity.
Thank you so much, Bambi. And that concludes the presentation. Congratulations again. We are your brothers and your sisters. Thank you, and may God bless.
Mr. O'Farrell, sorry to interrupt you, but we have a member on the queue. Mr. Corretts?
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you for bringing this forward. As, as some of you know, I've been involved in transgender issues for about 30 years, dating back to my West Hollywood days. Otherwise, I probably wouldn't have been as aware of the problem. We just passed, I should say, it was just implemented, I believe, last year, legislation that banned discrimination against transgender individuals in healthcare. Ironically, I was the author of that bill. I've been out of the legislature for a long time. It took nine years to get implemented, which is, is almost as shocking as the fact that it needed to be passed in the first place. But I know it's difficult for transgender individuals. There's a high suicide rate, there's a high hate crime rate, there's a lot of negatives, but all of those things are gradually improving. And I think the more we do things like this, I think there's a greater degree of acceptance. I never thought I would see two gay men being able to marry in my lifetime. And I think we will also see in my lifetime considerably greater acceptance and support for the transgender community. So thank you all for being here.
That concludes our speakers. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, let's move on to Item 23.
For Item 23, Madam President, in a case entitled Marlon Recovery Partners LLC versus CRA LA, City of Los Angeles et al., the recommendation is to approve the settlement of the first amended complaint and first amended cross complaint of Marlon Recovery Partners LLC pursuant to the terms of the proposed settlement agreement attached to the counsel file. Also, it is to authorize outside conflicts counsel Gregory M. Knert of Richards, Watson &amp; Gershon, a professional corporation, to make necessary technical adjustments to the settlement agreement and to execute, execute the settlement agreement on behalf of the city in the form of Exhibit B, which is attached, or substantially similar form, which is attached to counsel file to effectuate settlement of the Marlon Recovery, Recovery Partners LLC claims and the Marlon litigation.
Mr. Kocorian?
Thank you, Madam President. Budget and Finance considered this matter, recommends approval of the city attorney's recommendations. I'm sorry, oh, I'm sorry, approval of the recommendations. Thank you, Mr. City Attorney, of the recommendations. The matter can be resolved in open session unless members have considerations or concerns or questions.
Thank you, Mr. Kocorian. Madam Clerk, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Item passes. Now, let's move Items 22 and 23 forthwith, urgent forthwith. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, let's move on to Item 2.
Item 2, call special for cards.
Mr. Walsh? John Walsh, are you here? Good morning, sir, Item 2.
Good morning, point of order. I didn't hear how much the settlement was on the Marlon case. Anyway, 2 is, again, hearing of comments. You know what's necessary, the most necessary thing and the most convenient thing in the city of Los Angeles is more liquor licenses. And as I've said, every time a drunk driver kills somebody in the city, and predominantly, they are minorities, the blood is on all 30 of your hands, plus the mayor. You, is there any cap to how many liquor licenses there are? Other cities have cap. You are despicable. Mr. Rue, you are despicable, and you lied to us. When are you gonna vote against these liquor licenses? You make me vomit when I see this liquor license. And what is it for? Convenience at Circle K, scumbags, hollywoodhighlands.org. One minute!
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Next speaker, Patricia McAllister. Item 2, ma'am.
Good morning, madam. There is enough liquor being sold in Los Angeles and Los Angeles County. Even when you go to Vons and Ralph's stores, they've got about six to seven shelves of wine, whiskey. They sell more whiskey than they sell food. We need to stop this mess. Now, as far as alcohol deaths, okay? Drinking too much can harm your health. One, one in 10 deaths among working-age adults aged 20 to 64 years are due to excessive alcohol use. Now, this is from the Centers of Disease Control and Prevention. I printed it out. Excessive alcohol use is leading, is the leading cause of preventable death. The dangerous behavior accounted for approximately 88,000 deaths per year from 2006 to 2010, and accounted for one in 10 deaths among working-age adults aged 20 to 64. Excessive alcohol use extended the lives of those who died, not extended, but shortened the lives of those who died about 30 years. Okay, so, we have a problem here. And I noticed that you started selling liquor, and you've got some, I don't know, shady shops down there on 7th, right across from the Macy's there. And I've seen girls get picked up prostitutes. One girl was, two guys were in a car, and I was walking by, and they were begging her to get in. She was very attractive, she was a white girl. And they didn't have any license place on it. So, this didn't start to-
To the item, you just speak to the item.
People off because you don't like what we're saying. You do it all the time. That's a denial of my freedom of speech.
You gotta speak to the item. Thank you very much. That concludes cards. Let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Item passes. Madam Clerk, let's move on to Item 3.
Item 3, call special for cards.
Mr. Walsh?
John Walsh blogging at hollywoodhighlands.org, Jay Walsh confidential tweeting at Hollywood Dems. When you do a good job, I'm the first to congratulate you. And I don't know that much about the Wilshire Center Business Improvement District, but I know about the Hollywood Business Improvement District. I hope it's the same, because when the building across the street was infested with drug addicts, I went to the LAPD, and they didn't give a fucking shit. I went to the BID, and a retired officer went to the, to the LAPD, and the LAPD cleaned it out in three hours! I trust the Business Improvement District cops more than I trust the scumbag LAPD. They do a good job in Hollywood, they keep it cleaned. My landlord pays for it, and then he passes it on to all the renters. Two fucking minutes so far!
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. That concludes cards for Item 3. Madam Clerk, open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Item passes. Let's move on to Item 19.
Item 19, call special for cards.
Sean? Good morning, Sean.
Yes, good morning. Item 19, I'm gonna pass, I'm gonna wait for 17.
Great. Mr. Walsh, Item 19?
John Walsh blogging at hollywoodhighlands.org. Again, two in a row. The REAP is a very, very good program. And I tell everybody out there that if you have problems, things that are out of code in your apartment, and the landlord won't do anything about it, you go to the city, and you know what the city says? Says from now on, you don't pay your rent to the landlord, you pay it to the city till the landlord fixes everything that's out of code in your apartment. And apparently, these landlords have finally done that, and now they will be removed from REAP, and the rents will now go from the, from the tenant to the landlord. Most cities do not have this program, and believe me, it is very effective, and I want to thank everybody who passed it. Three fucking minutes I've used!
Thank you, Mr. Walsh, we appreciate that. That concludes cards on this item. Madam Clerk, open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Item passes. Madam Clerk, let's move on to Item 21.
For Item 21, Madam President, a motion is required, and that motion has not been circulated yet.
Okay, let's move on to Item 1.
Item 1, call special for cards.
Mr. Walsh, Item number 1?
John Walsh tweeting at Hollywood Dems. Okay, this is, again, this is a lien program. Another excellent program here. Compare this to Glendale, where the landlords rule, and Republican landlords. Here, it means if your apartment, this is another one for building and safety, if building and safety tickets, the landlords, there's a lien on the landlord's property, you can see $860, $562. There are quite a number of them, all the way up to K. This is an excellent program. I have, so I thank you again. That's four fucking minutes only! Did you hear me? Arnaldo Gutierrez? Arnaldo Gutierrez? Okay, let's prepare to vote on this item. Let me make sure. So let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Okay, members, what we're gonna do now is we're gonna move to, we're gonna do Items 14 through 18. So I'm going to do public comment, Mr. City Attorney, on this set of items at a minute. And we'll do at least 35, 30 minutes, and we'll try to get everyone. So let's start out with Robert McCart, Mercado, Judith Hirschberg, Gary McLaughlin, please come forward, followed by Carol Crawford. Please, the sooner you come up, the sooner we'll be able to move forward. Set the clock for a minute. Now, on this 16 in particular, the public hearing was already held, but we want to take a moment, reopen it, so that we can hear from the individuals that are here with us today. So yes, sir, the floor is yours.
Thank you, sir. My name is Robert Mercado. I'm a community leader, in our leader, behind our neighborhood watch. We've been having this problem on, between Wingo and Osborne. It's an encampment with homeless and trans at the same time. This problem has been happening for, as long as I lived there. And the resources we are using are, at the end of the day, we clean it up, I guess, they come right back. As soon as the police goes away, they come right back. You know, they're too close to our middle school. They're right next to one of our neighbors, and the problem doesn't stop there. They're, now they're coming into our community and stealing our stuff that we worked hard to have. Well, I understand the homeless. There should be, I know that there's resources there for them, but when they start coming into our community-
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mercado. So if I could have Judith, Judith Hirschberg, Gary McLaughlin, Carol Crawford, and Cecilia Garcia. Yes, please come forward and identify yourself.
Thank you. I'm Judith Hirschberg, and it's a pleasure to come back here. In my youth, I worked for Councilman Marvin Browdy. So, yes, I know the building well. Thank you. I'd like to talk a little bit about the homeless problem and the problem of getting rid of what they like to gather with them. It's not something that we haven't been dealing with for 40 or 50 or 60 years, except that it's worse. It's much worse. And, and I have to tell you that last week, two blocks from my house, there was a fire in a vacant building that was started, when I asked the police officers and the firefighters, by quote-unquote "a transient" who had walked into the building. So in my nice neighborhood, we have people who have no place to sleep, come into vacant homes and set fires. It's not a good idea.
Thank you. If I could have the next speaker? And then I, again, Carol Crawford and Cecilia Garcia. Yes, sir.
My name's Gary McLaughlin. I live over by the homeless encampment on Sharp Street, and I think the police should be able to get, get their hands untied and do their job to help out the homeowners in that area, and plus, all over LA City. Because it's getting over too much, too many homeless people, and there's no place where they can go and live. The chronic ones that don't want help, they just move from one place to the other and leave a dirty mess for the taxpayers to pay for it, for the sanitation to clean up the area. to pay for it, for the sanitation to clean up the area. I think that they should find somewhere where the chronic homeless people, because they don't want no help at all, to go and have tents somewhere and things like that so they know how to live their own way.
Thank you. So please, if I could have the next speaker come forward and identify herself. I have Ms. Crawford, Ms. Garcia, and I, Fahad Samab. Yes.
Hi, my name's Carol Crawford. I live in Arlita. My brother just spoke. I've been working with the council for over a year and every time we get the alleyway cleaned up, they come right back. It's like cleaning the house for them. They will not leave. The solutions, it's horrible. Prostitution, drugs. The neighbors are finding needles in their homes, in the backyards. People can't even sleep. They're stealing. It's horrible. I've been working for over a year with the council and I think that it's time that the LAPD can have their hands untied and do something for us. And I think they should have that privilege. If they can come along and move them out, they need to move them out. I don't think that it should just be the city, I mean, the Caltrans that can move them. I think it should be city and Caltrans. And it's just disgusting.
Thank you. Next speaker, please, and if I could ask Elsie Chavez to find her way to the center aisle. I'm looking for Ms. Garcia.
I'm sorry, perdón. Buenos dias. Soy Cecilia Garcia. Vivo en la ciudad de Arleta. Soy la persona que vive al lado donde estaban los homeless.
I can get you to hold one second for our translation. Go ahead.
Soy la persona que vive al lado donde estaban los homeless.
I am the person who live next to the place where the homeless are staying at.
Hemos pasado noches sin dormir.
We have spent many sleepless nights.
Mi hijo no podía salir ni a jugar a la yarda.
My son was not even able to go play outside the patio.
Tuvimos que apagar la alberca, cerrar el motor porque no podía monistar en la alberca.
We had to close the swimming pool because we were not able to be next to the swimming pool.
Eran demasiado homeless, demasiada basura.
There were so many homeless and that there was so many trash.
Estaba policía, estaban las personas que ayudan a homeless, pero nadie llegaba a la 1, 2, 3, 4 de la mañana.
The police were there and also many people who helped the homeless, but nobody comes around 1:00 in the morning.
Oyendo peleas.
We were listening how they were fighting.
Malas palabras.
Bad words.
Encontré agujas, jeringas en mi yarda.
And I found needles and syringes on my backyard.
Botes de pastillas.
Bottles of pills.
Pelotas.
Balls.
Para entretener a mis perros.
To entertain my dogs.
Yo creo que nadie de ustedes podría vivir así.
I know that nobody of you will live like that.
Se limpió.
It was cleaned.
La semana pasada.
It was cleaned last week.
Ocho camiones de basura.
Five trucks full of trash.
No es justo esto.
This is not fair.
No sé qué más puedo decirles porque son tantas cosas.
I don't know what else can I tell you because there are so many things.
Pedimos tanta ayuda.
We request a lot of help.
Que no sé cómo se pueda solucionar este problema.
That I don't know how this problem can be solved.
Gracias.
Thank you.
Perdón.
Thank you for coming down.
So if I could have Fahad, Elsie Chavez, I think it's Juan Pakai, and Manuel Diaz.
My name is Fahad Samab. The people before me are my neighbors. I own a business in Arlita and I basically, the encampment is right next to my business. We have been dealing with this problem for several years and it's getting so bad. They basically walk into our business, steal things. We call the police. The police don't come for half an hour. They get away. They are very combatant. They have assaulted me. They have assaulted my employees. We have lost a lot of customers because they come inside, they go to the bathroom, they stay for 45 minutes. And that alley basically is not used by my neighbors. They cannot walk their kids, you know, to the school. And, you know, we have called the police. We have done so many things. I have like 15 reports of different incidents that have happened there and nothing has been done. And it's very frustrating and basically they have taken over our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Please come forward and identify yourself.
Buenos dias. Mi nombre es Elsie Chavez.
Could we have, if you could wait one moment? Continue.
Vivo en Panorama City. Oh, mi nombre es Elsie Chavez.
My name is Elsie Chavez.
Vivo en Marson Street, Panorama City.
I live in Marson Street in Panorama City.
Desde el mes de agosto hay un homeless que vive en la parte de atrás de mi casa.
Since the month of August, there's a homeless who lives in the backyard of my house.
Ya, y la verdad es que es horrible, no se puede salir, a veces lleva personas.
And the truth, it is horrible. I cannot go out and then sometimes people there's in the backyard.
Cuando se molestan sus amigos, abriendan cosas a la parte de atrás de mi jardín.
When their friends get upset, they throw things in my backyard.
Al día siguiente no encuentro nada porque supongo que en la noche se metió a sacarlas.
The following day, I cannot find anything because I suppose he came over the night to take them out.
Yo entiendo que es muy triste la situación de ellos, pero también la mía es terrible.
I understand that their situation is very sad, but my situation is horrible.
Yo tengo miedo que ellos en cualquier momento, pues no sé, drogados, borrachos, se puedan meter a mi propiedad.
I am afraid that one day maybe under the drugs or drunk and they can get into my property.
Vivo allí 11 años y no he tenido ese problema sino hace dos meses.
I've been living there for 11 years so far and I haven't had that problems only two months ago.
Ojalá se pueda solucionar pronto este problema. Deseo que me ayuden. Muchas gracias.
Hopefully, this problem can be solved anytime soon. I wish you guys can help me. Thank you very much.
Okay, next.
Morning, everyone. I'm here in behalf of Smart &amp; Final and also...
Your name?
My name is Juan Pakai and I'm in behalf of Smart &amp; Final, but more important, I'm in behalf of my community. I grew up in the San Fernando Valley and the things that had been going on in San Fernando Valley, it's just atrocious. The encampments that we find everywhere along our city sidewalks, neighborhoods, under the freeways is just going out of control. I'm going to just tell you a little bit of what I've experienced in front of my business at Smart &amp; Final. Some of the things that I've seen is illegal drug selling, prostitution, not only that, but a lot of breaking into my customers' cars, my associates. My associates have been harassed by these people and we do ask Eric Garcetti to enforce...
Thank you. Thank you. So if I could add the next, one minute per speaker.
Thank you so much.
So I'm asking for Mr. Diaz, followed by Gary Blasi, and I can't quite, it looks like the next name could be Elaine Jenkins. Griselda Diaz. So go ahead, sir.
Good morning, sir. My name is Manuel Diaz. I try to, my son is an interpreter, okay?
We're here today. We're here today to try to help our community improve and get better. We live in an address, 1326 8 Wingo Street. We've been living here for more than 30 years already. And now we're being invaded by these homeless people and, you know, they're destroying the neighborhood. We're living in a terrible situation at the moment. We're just living between, you know, urine, you know, feces and everything else that these homeless people are doing within the neighborhood. If I bet one of you with the power that you guys have... If you're in the situation that we were, you would immediately remove these people and deal with it and not be like us. At the moment, we're trying to support Act 5611 and keep it how it is so the city and Metro can help us out with our situation with the homeless encampment. So the police can have the power to help us remove our situation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so if I could have the next speaker come and identify herself and I want to, I think it's Joanne Ralto, if you'd make your way to the center aisle as well. Please come forward.
Good morning. I need an interpreter, please.
Translation. In fact, Mr. Translator, why don't you just sit here until we finish this? Go right ahead, ma'am.
Yes, good morning, sir. I'm here because...
Your name?
Oh, my name is Griselda Diaz. I live...
¿Vozar en inglés o en español?
Mi nombre es Griselda Diaz.
My name is Griselda Diaz.
Y vivo en la ciudad de Arleta, 13268.
And I live in the city of Arlita, 368.
Wingo Street, Arleta.
On...
Arleta, California.
In Arlita, California.
Sí. La razón por la que estoy aquí es por los indigentes que llegaron ahí a invadir mi colonia.
The reason why I'm here is because of the indigenous people that came to invade my neighborhood.
Se terminó la tranquilidad en esa area.
The peace ended in that area.
Porque ellos andan por todas partes, tratando de robar lo que pueden.
Because they're everywhere trying to steal whatever they can.
Pasan alumbrando todos los carros con una lámpara y viendo a ver qué se llevan.
They start lighting the cars with the flashlight to see what they can steal.
Le robaron, le robaron el vidrio a la novia de mi hijo y...
My son's girlfriend's car was, his car was, the window was broken.
Y se andan haciendo del baño por todas partes y las moscas andan por todas partes y no podemos ni siquiera tener una carne asada porque estamos comiéndonos la caca de esos, de los indigentes.
And they're pooping everywhere and now there flies all over, everywhere. We were making the carne asada and now we cannot eat the carne asada because we eating the poop of those homeless people.
Que no tienen respeto y son bien agresivos.
They're very respectful and very aggressive.
Y me gustaría que pusieran atención a esto, por favor.
And I would like you to please pay attention to this.
Gracias.
Thank you.
Thank you. So if I could have next, next speaker, just come and identify.
Good morning. My name is Elaine Jenkins and I live in the historical district of San Pedro. My new neighbors are the homeless. It is acceptable that this is happening in San Pedro and San Pedro has always been a giving town that looked out for the less fortunate, but we are now the dumping ground for the homeless. The homeless of today is not the homeless of yesterday. The majority of the homeless today are drug addicts and mentally ill. Crime and theft has increased in my neighborhood. The homeless have moved in and taken over my town. I have found out that my homeless neighbors can move in and set up their shelters on the sidewalk outside of my house. They can drag up old mattresses, sofas, and spread trash everywhere. They can use the streets as their public restroom. They can run a stolen bike chop shop on the sidewalk outside of my house. I can call the law enforcement. They will come out. Nothing's done. The homeless knows this and they have told me, "Go ahead and call. They won't do anything to us." This is unacceptable. I am afraid to leave my house, afraid that the homeless will see me leave and break into my home. I cannot stand here and tackle horrible...
Thank, thank you.
This is the state of America.
Thank you, thank you. Your time is up. Okay. All right, please, before, before, before we go to the next speaker. So it's my understanding that you also need to be at the post so you can do translation. So I'm just going to ask you to be as nimble as you can so that if we do need you, you run back here. Are you Mr.?
My name is Gary Blasi. I'm a professor of law emeritus at the UCLA Law School and special counsel to Public Counsel's Opportunity Under Law Project. No one should have to live next to a homeless encampment and also, no one should have to live in a homeless encampment. You're going to hear from the city attorney about how the amendments that are proposed today will somehow solve the constitutionality problem with this ordinance. You've heard similar reports from previous city attorneys and this city attorney in the past. The problem is that federal judges have uniformly disagreed with them. So I'm here to tell you that as amended, 5611 will still be unconstitutional and therefore unenforceable. More to the point, it won't accomplish anything. It will give these people the appearance that you've done something, but in reality, it will do more than allow the police to move homeless people around, which is power that they already have. If you want to address this problem, it has to be dealt with both immediately and long term. Immediately, you've got to deal with the situation on the streets.
Thank you. If I could have the next speaker.
Hi, my name is Joanne Rallo and I'm a resident of San Pedro. Help us to save San Pedro. When we report on homeless encampments, it's not the 72-hour notice that you think it is. A 72-hour notice in San Pedro turns into a one-to-two-week ordeal. Why? Because our police are so short-staffed at Harbor Division that serving a 72-hour notice is considered a low priority. Our port town will never be able to thrive for our tourists and our businesses if these encampments are allowed to stay as long as they do and grow as large as they do. We need more police officers at Harbor Division to not only enforce the laws towards these encampments and aggressive panhandlers, but some of these homeless individuals commit crimes in broad daylight and nothing is being done about it. The citizens are tired of waiting for LA to help us and have taken things into their own hands by cleaning up encampments themselves. What happens if one of us gets hurt because the city isn't taking issue fast enough? We have waited long enough for the help and we want it now. Once again, help us to save San Pedro.
Thank you. Thank you. So if I could get Elisa, I guess it's Hartz, Elizabeth Vaso, Eddie Howard, maybe, Pete Wile or Pete White, please come forward. Yes.
My name is Elisa Hartz and I'm attorney at Public Counsel Law Center. Together with the law firm of Munger, Toll's, and Olson, on behalf of our client, LA Can, we submitted a letter concerning 5611, which details the numerous serious constitutional violations caused by 5611 as written. In the letter, we explain how these constitutional violations expose the city to serious litigation. I encourage you to read this letter in full and would be pleased to provide you with a copy. One of the most serious of the constitutional and legal violations that 5611 would cause is that the ordinance criminalizes homelessness in violation of the Eighth Amendment. If homeless people have no place to keep their belongings because they live on the street and are then subjected to a criminal penalty for having their belongings on the street, the city is effectively criminalizing the status of homelessness. This constitutes cruel and unusual punishment in violation of the Eighth Amendment of the Constitution. I would note that the federal government has been cracking down...
Thank you. Thank you. So if I can get the next speaker. Yes, identify yourself.
My name is Elizabeth Vioso. I'm a fourth-generation San Pedron. I have looked back in our old family albums when San Pedro streets were paved with dirt. Those dirt roads were cleaner than our paved streets are today. Until something is done regarding the lawlessness and utter disregard for our citizens, we are now burdened with unsanitary streets and drug-infested neighborhoods. The city of Los Angeles has turned its back on San Pedro, my hometown, and it's time to take responsibility and make amends to the port town that provides so much in the way of revenue. Please find it in your hearts to help save San Pedro. The time is now. Thank you.
Thank you. Please identify yourself, sir.
My name is Eddie Howard from the Los Angeles Community Action Network. Martin Luther King said one time so eloquently that an individual has... that an individual has not started living until he can rise above the narrow confines of his own individualistic concerns to the broader concerns of all humanity. In a meeting that we had with the mayor on July 29th, I stated to him that there is not now, nor has there ever been, a clear articulation for a comprehensive strategy concerning the homeless. But one thing has always been intrinsic in all the conversations that we hear today and that we've heard previously, that criminalization is the answer. And we stand here today to say criminalization is not the answer. Homes and housing is the answer. And we tell you today unequivocally that we're not going to stand by and keep allowing this city, this council, and anyone else to think that we are going to stand by and allow the criminalization to go forward. We say unequivocally again that house keys is the answer and not criminalization. Thank you.
Pete White, L.A. Can. So how dare this council, on the one hand, the council in the city of Los Angeles, on the one hand declare a homeless state of emergency and give a symbolic figure, $100 million, to address that crisis? And then on the other hand, talk to Castro from HUD and say, "We do not criminalize. We do not criminalize. Do not deduct two points from us, right? Do not jeopardize the millions of dollars that comes from HUD in providing services to the poorest of the poor." And then the next day, come before the city of Los Angeles and say, "5611 needs a criminal element. It needs criminalization, right?" So we would risk millions of dollars with the federal government to continue to criminalize poor people in poverty in the streets. Something is wrong with that picture. I'm saying, I read Buscagno's Facebook. There are plenty of rules and codes in the books for the police force to enforce. I will lastly say, how dare the police department and others attempt to divide Angelinos? I heard comments from San Pedro saying, "The natives." I will say quickly...
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Thank you. You are disrupting the meeting. Come on. We have a lot of people. They have the right to speak. Okay, everybody's gonna get to speak. But let's be fair. Nuria Lobo, followed by, it's either Mimi Jamal. And I think it's General Dogan or Dugan. And Steve Diaz, please come forward. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, I'm Nuvia Lobo and I just wanted to speak as a parent who lives downtown. Moved here with the expectation that this would be a place to raise my children. However, things have gotten worse since I've been here three, just in the three years since I've been here. I'm really starting to question whether this is a place where I can raise my family. In fact, I live on Broadway. And just walking down to Grand Park, I have to maneuver around people who are lying on the streets or walking to... I had the experience recently where I was walking to CVS to get medication for my daughter and there was a woman lying on the street with her genitals exposed. And my heart broke for her. And it really made me question whether this is just the conditions downtown and whether this is the right place to raise a family. And I really want this to be a place for us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. So if I could have the next, identify yourself?
Hello, everyone. My name is Mimi Jamil. And I'd like to also continue with what my friend Nuvia was trying to say. We're young families here in downtown. I've been here for almost 20 years. I started off in college and led a single life and then finally had a family. And before, I didn't notice these things. These things didn't bother me because it was so easy to avoid it. But when you have a family, you have a whole different perspective. And when you have little ones and there's, you know, I'm not saying all homeless bother us, but it's the ones that are mentally ill or they have issues. And when they start screaming, shouting, swinging things, when I'm walking the stroller or my dogs and there are people defecating, which I just saw the past week, how do you explain that to your two-year-old? And when my little baby's watching that, you know, how do you tell it's okay? It makes us question. We want to stay in downtown. This is our home. DTLA is, you know, this is where we belong. But something has to be done in order for us to continue or else we're just gonna have to move to the suburbs, which we don't want to.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you both. So we're gonna have General Dugan and Steve. And then I can't quite make out the next card. I think the last name is Eris. First name is E N C. And then we'll have Nadia Abresha. Yes, sir.
My name is General Dugan. You can't get nobody's name from L.A. Can right today. L.A. Can continues to stand firm in its opposition to the creation of additional tools and laws that criminalize homeless people. And I just want to stop right there and say that you cannot police your way out of this homeless. These folks who down here today, you missed the homeless solution meeting that we had earlier this month. It was two state senators from up north that came down here. Understand me to have a meeting on homeless to talk about solutions. Y'all wasn't there. The reason why... The reason why you wasn't there is because every time you come here is just you come here to talk about criminalization. That's where the council member bring you here for, just to criminalize people. The guy over there, the captain, he'll tell you, the last 10 years, they've been trying to police their way out of homelessness on Skid Row. He had the most police cops, he had the most guns on the block, writing the most tickets and made the most arrests.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, now I need the next speaker. Okay, General, you're disrupting the meeting. Come on. No, your time is up. Be fair to the other people. That's all I'm asking. Everybody gets a minute. And I want to make sure everybody sits, gets an opportunity to speak their piece. Mr. Diaz, the floor is yours.
Good morning, city council members. My name is Steve Diaz and I am with L.A. Can. It's really important to understand what's at stake and what's at risk right now. You're putting before you the possibility of losing federal funds in the name of continuing to criminalize homeless individuals on the street. By passing 5611, all you do is create a vehicle to ensure police can interact with individuals. You do not provide services. You do not enhance services. And even in your agenda item further, you talk about creation of storage. All that's in that agenda item is the creation of a goal. A goal is exactly that, something you are trying to accomplish, not something that you are doing. By continuing to criminalize folks, by continuing to allow 5611 on the books, you will ensure that Angelinos continue to have a date, not with a housing unit, a date with a sale. And everyone who's here from San Pedro and San Fernando should realize that by supporting this, you're supporting criminalization, not additional services. Repeal 5611.
Thank you. So if you could please identify yourself?
My name is Eric Ades. I'm with the Los Angeles Community Action Network.
Ah, that was Eric.
Yeah.
Okay.
Ben Handwriting. It is actually unconscionable that we are talking about this right now. How many more times do we have to go through this? As attorneys have stated, it is unconstitutional to pass this law. If folks are serious about ending this issue, about really taking on this crisis, I'm appealing to all the council members who actually want to make a dent. Even the council members who are right now on the wrong side of this. You are leaving the city open to litigation. And that is not a threat. We don't want to sue the city. We are put in a position that is reflective of the federal government, the Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals, the Department of Justice, and the Housing and Urban Development, who are now threatening to take federal dollars away from our city while you're trying to make up 87 million out of 100 million dollars that isn't there yet. We should not be entertaining the idea that we're ever gonna pass enough laws, arrest enough people, have misdemeanors, end homelessness. Homelessness ends with housing. For all the folks here that are supporting this, housing is the solution, not supporting LAPD to arrest people for being poor.
Thank you. Yes, please come forward and identify yourself. Okay, come on, let's let the other person speak. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Nadia Abrica. And the reason that I'm here, I'm an educator and I am also a community organizer. But the reason that I'm here is because I am a mother of two beautiful children. And unfortunately, they're not allowed to go play outside in the front yard because all these homeless that are outside, the ones I feel very sorry about, but I also feel sorry about my kids not being able to go outside. I know who can, so in District 7, it's been doing a wonderful job together with our council member, Mr. Felipe Fuentes. But I believe it's not enough. I also want to take the opportunity to thank Ms. Nuri Martinez for what she did outside with working together with Asmari and Final. But I think it's not enough. We need to push a little more so we can... We need to push for it to enforce motion 5611. It is very important for all our cities. I feel sorry for these people, but we really need that for our community. We need our community to be clean. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So now I'm looking for Mr. Mark Litman, Sunny Lopez, Mike Harper. Please come forward. Yes, sir.
Good morning. It is so, so easy to blame the victim. It is so easy to be self-righteous when you have a roof over your head and think it will never happen to you. But the fact is that here in Los Angeles, every month, we're having 13,000 new people winding up on the streets. And why is this? No one is going after the root cause of homelessness. Why is this? Because of decades of policies by this city council and this government to cater to the big developers, to cater to the big banks, to cater to the big real estate agents who are driving our rents up, making us homeless, making it unaffordable to live here. And then we say, "Why are there so many people living on the streets?" It's because that our budget is upside down. Homelessness is not just a social issue. It is an economic issue. It's how you make your budget when 60% of our budget goes to...
Thank you. Thank you very much. So if I could have the... Is this Ms. Lopez?
My name is Sunny Lopez. I am a stakeholder from the beautiful, eclectic, and historical coastal community of San Pedro, where we offer many, many different groups, offering free services to help the homeless. When they're disincentivized, they stay on the street. They're acclimated to staying on the street by some folks. We would like to get them help. We would like to get them shelter. But when you allow them to stay in a downward spiral on the streets, the longer on the street, the more damage to mind and body. Please help us. Help them. Please amend this amendment. Please, help us.
Thank you. So I'm assuming this could be Mr. Harper. So I'm looking for George Palazia. And do we have Manuel Diaz Jr.? Or did you already come up and speak? Hania... Wait, wait, let's start with you. Let me try to figure out and figure this name out. So go ahead.
Good morning, council members. My name is Mike Harper. I'm a San Pedro resident and also a member of the Los Angeles Waterfront Access and Redevelopment Coalition. I made the trip up here today to, in support of this amendment. And it's clear the city of LA has a terrible problem that continues to worsen. In my seaside hometown of San Pedro, of which I'm terribly proud to be called my hometown, our city and waterfront is littered with homeless encampments on our public sidewalks, open and blatant in drug abuse, increasing crime, filth, and poverty. This is not only a quality-of-life issue for taxpaying citizens, but an increasing health and safety issue as well. We need to remove the restrictions that will allow our LAPD to do their jobs and protect our citizens and communities. The LAPD must be able to enforce stricter laws for those individuals that have blatant disregard for themselves, other citizens, the community, and the law. It may also force some of the reluctant homeless into seeking out services and temporary housing.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Everybody gets one minute. So if you could please come forward? Identify yourself.
I'm George Palazio, resident of San Pedro. Help us to save San Pedro. Stolen shopping carts full of trash, used syringes, and the overpowering smell of inhuman feces and urine on our streets are all too common scenarios. There are tents blocking entire sidewalks like a scene out of Skid Row, forcing school-bound children and the elderly to walk in the street. Our neighborhood has been overrun and has had an effect on our hard-working taxpayers, business, and tourism. When a 72-hour notice is issued, once an encampment is cleared, within a few hours, the homeless are back pitching up their tents. The majority of them have become aggressive and unpredictable panhandlers, harassing customers outside of businesses and at the exits of our freeways. They choose to stay on the streets even when offered the help and resources. And in the process, they collect more than just personal belongings. They collect trash and litter and around their encampments, polluting our streets and parks.
Thank you, sir. So if I could have the next? Okay, please keep it down. We can have the next speaker. Yes, identify yourself.
Hi, my name is Hanya Strabatos. I'm also a proud resident of San Pedro. Beautiful town. We, I live and I have a business in the downtown district, which is a business improvement district, two blocks from the Port of LA. And we have a beautiful park that we spent $2 million two years ago to refurbish it. And that's where now all the homeless are camping, right by the public...
Take your time.
I'm sorry. Anyway. I also, I'm very scared to open the door, my doors for business because it attracts a lot of... It's not a crime to be homeless. I understand that and our hearts are bleeding for them. But also, we need some protection also, not from homeless people, from schizophrenics and from drug addicts. And I think that the city of LA failed us.
Thank you, thank you. So if I could get an Anthony, okay. Anthony, I think it's Lucino, Patricia McAllister, and Brian Barajas. Please come forward. Yes, sir.
Hi, good morning. My name is Anthony Lucido. As a citizen of San Pedro, we are concerned about current state of our beloved town. According to the Daily Breeze, the homeless population has risen 39% in the past two years in the South Bay. And it seems as though San Pedro has taken the blunt of it. San Pedro has been the redheaded stepchild of LA and we are sick and tired and furious that we have become dumping ground. Resources far and few in between. Not only are we barely capable of taking care of our own, but we get more and more new homeless faces in town who have admitted that they have come from areas outside of the South Bay. The biggest problem is in January, approximately 380 homeless people in San Pedro were all offered help and shelter. Only 78 accepted. Why, why are we forced to have 300 of them litter on our streets and lower our property value? Please help us save San Pedro.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Ms. McAllister, followed by Mr. Barajas, followed by Raquel Beard. Yes, ma'am.
Patricia McAllister here. 80% of the homeless are African-American. That's why you want to police them. These illegals who are in here, this is why we have a homeless problem. Illegals are living in affordable housing. They have no business getting affordable housing. They can't even speak English, coming up in here and talking about black folks in their community, putting trash everywhere. Go back to Mexico and get in your country. That is why we have the problem here. We need to get these illegal aliens out of this country.
Stay on the subject.
President Trump for president. Now, that's what I'm saying right here.
No, you're off the subject. Thank you very much. President, President Trump is not this subject. No, you stay on the subject.
You got a housing problem, not a shelter problem. We need to... HUD penalized Los Angeles this year for not spending 77 million. Go on the website. HUD penalized them. You guys are hurting this nation and you're hurting the people and you're not gonna kill black people up in here, okay?
Thank you, thank you. So if I could get Brian Barajas, followed by Raquel Beard. And I think it's Don Garza. Mr. Barajas.
Okay, now, let me bring up a subject for everybody here. Why is this all happening? It's very simple. We're in a crisis of actually the human race. We actually stopped believing in ourselves. This country can actually resolve the crisis if we actually had a citizenry that's committed... had a citizenry that's committed to resolving this issue. What's the problem? Well, we don't have what's called a productive economy. And when you lack a productive economy, guess what happens to the people? They attack each other to the point that they don't give a shit about the homeless.
All right, Brian. Raquel Beard, Don Garza, Blair Bestin, maybe? Dr. Josh, yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Raquel Beard, the Downtown Industrial Business Improvement District. Uh, the comments that I'm hearing today from San Pedro and other communities are, uh, represents about 80% of Skid Row. We've heard this for over 20 years now. So I congratulate them for coming and speaking up for themselves. There's confusion about status and behavior because someone is homeless does not give them the right to commit crimes against others. And we shouldn't get that confused. Um, there's a great article in the headlines of yesterday's Los Angeles Business Journal that has comments from business owners in the Skid Row area detailing how scary and difficult it is for their employees and to conduct businesses. My staff have been assaulted. Cars are vandalized. We are victimized every day. So the confusion between status and criminal behavior, I'm just so tired of that conversation. Criminal acts are criminal acts, and they should be handled as such. And homelessness should be handled, handled as such. And people should have housing, but criminality is not-
Thank you very much. Okay, if I could have Mr. Garza, followed by Blair Bestin, followed by Dr. Josh, followed by, I think this is Marie Ramsey, I think. Go right ahead.
Thank you, her. Um, this city council has a power. This city council today has a power. Not the city council of years ago. Let's talk about this city council. You have the power to change what the reactions of past city councils and mayors have done. And I have faith in each and every one of you that you can do it. I know you can do it, Jose Wezar. I've known you for years. I know Mike Bonin can do it. I know Joe Buscaino can do it. I know all of you guys can do this. We cannot go back. We cannot be sued again. If you get sued over 56.11D, Levon will be cemented all over this city, and everyone is going to have to walk in the streets because the encampments will be entrenched for all time and eternity.
Okay, next.
Good morning. Blair Bestin, Executive Director of the Historic Core Business Improvement District. I'm also a single mom raising a child in downtown Los Angeles. Um, this is about the entire community and its health and well-being and prioritizing resources for sidewalks to be cleaned. I do believe tents need to come down during the day, and we need a mechanism for creating a, uh, reducing public health risks. Uh, I'm going to read from Dr. Milt Kogan. He couldn't be here today, but he's been servicing the, uh, for 40 years, the mentally ill on Skid Row. The allocation of resources must be first directed to the prevention of disease epidemics threatening our entire downtown population. One has to only walk on Broadway and Fifth Street to easily see open wounds on the mentally ill collapsed on our streets. Does anyone suspect that contagious MRSA in these wounds remains only on the affected individual? These germs float in the air and infect everything these sick individuals touch. Our Skid Row density of unwashed tents and cardboard living boxes are hosts of TB, upper respiratory viruses-
Thank you. Thank you so much. So if I could now get, uh, and then Marie, you, you gotta, I could not read your writing. Okay, so, yes, sir.
Hi, my name is Dr. Joshua Brexton. I'm a downtown resident. Um, first off, I'd like to encourage all of you guys, if you haven't already, to go visit Skid Row. Dion will give you a tour. Take a camera. You'll get thousands of views on your website. Highly recommend it. What you will see down there is permanent tent encampments. You'll see amazing amounts of despair. You'll see trash floating down the street. You'll see rats jaywalking with immunity. And it's just like a disaster zone down there. Not only that, it's one of the most unhealthy places there is. There, it has its own strain of tuberculosis. The head of the union rescue mission is about to lose his foot because of MRSA. This needs to be cleaned up. These rules help clean up Skid Row and create a healthy place where people won't die of exposure. People in Los Angeles with 80-degree weather is dying of exposure because of this. With my last eight seconds, I want to say, no Donald Trump, go Hillary Clinton.
Yeah, thank you. Ms., uh, Ramsey, welcome home. Good to see you.
Thank you, sir. Uh, good morning. My name is Marie Ramsey, and I'm here on behalf of the Central City Association. First, I'd like to thank the council for tackling the complex issue of homelessness. It is complex, and it will require a wide array of solutions. Today, I'm here to ask that you address the immediate public health and safety condition on our sidewalks. I encourage the council to move forward with implementing 5611 and hope enforcement can be done with the recently established homeless citation court. The court is one way to bring enforcement to a new level and also encourage people to accept services. We are in a state of emergency, and we believe we must move forward now. We need to continue to elevate this conversation and recognize that homelessness is impacting all members of our community. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Uh, Don Davis. Don Davis.
Thank you. Don Davis, downtown resident and outreach volunteer. I, um, piggyback on the comments of Blair Bestin and Josh. Oh.
Start you over again. Our bad.
Okay. Um, I'd like to piggyback on the comments of Josh and Blair and Raquel. This is a public safety issue all the way around. And I would again encourage you to go down, if you haven't been down to Skid Row, and see what's going on down there. It doesn't even happen just in Skid Row. It's all over the city of downtown. And obviously, as you heard, it's all over in Los Angeles County. We need to get our city government and our county government to start working together to solve this issue. It's heartbreaking, and these folks need help all the way around. So let's make it happen.
Thank you. Okay, Jonathan Klein. Jonathan, are you here? Klein.
Oh, Rabbi. Yeah. Oh, at least you know who I am. Thank you. Rabbi Jonathan Klein, clergy and lady, Knight for Economic Justice. And I just, you know, there's, everyone has said so many things here. What I'm most concerned about is the tenor of the conversation and the sort of dehumanizing that we are experiencing, actually in some ways on both sides of this debate. I oppose, uh, this, uh, particular measure as do most of the clergy that I work with, which, uh, you know, I, I dare you to find clergy that support this position of, of 5611. But more to the point, we have to find a way to rebuild a conversation that is based on humanity and our highest ideals. It's painful to hear the type of rhetoric that is expressed in this room, um, and not just by people who are here on a regular basis, but by people who are, uh, coming in on this particular issue. I just call on us to register our concerns with a little bit more decency, and also for the council to go from the heart, not just from the head, though both are important. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Members, it is now time for us to engage in this conversation. Uh, we can tell, based on the public comment that we've had today, that, uh, we have a very huge challenge that we are facing. We, we've got to try to blend all concerns and come up with policies and programs that, uh, make sense. But I want to take a moment to say that we have accomplished a great deal. Last year, this time, no one talked about this issue the way that we are talking about it today. We have come together and have agreed as a council that this is one of the most important issues that we are facing. We has, we have also, in a short period of time, partnered with the county and with the state. And for the first time, there is a partnership going forward that could bring about true change. We created, for the first time in the history of this council, a standing committee that deals with these issues on a daily basis. And I thank the committee for their service, led by Mr. Harris Dawson and by Mr. Wezar. Okay, now you are out of order. People are, are saying that we need a comprehensive plan. I think it was Mr. Howard in particular. And that's exactly what we are attempting to do here. Now, we may not have moved as quickly as some people would have liked, but this committee was only established in July. So I would say that we have come a long way. We are talking about the commitments of, of money, $100 million, a commitment, a commitment from the county, commitments from the state. So we have an opportunity here to come together and to really get some things done. So today, I think, is our day to let people know some of our thoughts and some of the things that we want to put in place. Uh, I commend all of the conversation that has been going on around this horseshoe by members who aren't even on the committee. This has been a, uh, I think, a very sensitive issue where all of you have weighed in. And because of your involvement, at the end of the day, we're going to wind up in a better place than we were. With that said, with that said, I want to, I'm going to defer, you want to defer to Mr. Wezar to begin the, uh, conversation. And Mr. Wezar, the, the floor is yours. And again, thank you for all that you've done.
Thank you, Mr. President. And as the President outlined, uh, the city is taking responsibility for the homeless that exist on our streets. Uh, for the longest time, uh, the city has deferred to the county, who is primarily responsible for social services, and to the nonprofits and stakeholders who are doing a tremendous job with very limited resources to address this issue. But with the establishment of the Permanent Homelessness and Poverty Committee, uh, we are acknowledging, and we're taking this head-on, that we have a huge responsibility in this as well. Uh, and before us today is not only a process by which we are beginning to establish the infrastructure necessary within the city to address homelessness, but also some immediate steps that we need to take. For example, moving forward with $100 million that is necessary to start addressing this issue a bit more seriously. Also, creating a coordinator position or czar position to help coordinate internally within the city what our approach should be. We're moving forward in assuring that we have places where homeless can put their possessions and voluntarily store them throughout the city and not just in Skid Row. And we're also acknowledging, and you've heard from testimony today, that allowing people to live on the streets is not a way the city should move forward in addressing homelessness. Whether you're saying that 5611 is too harsh, or you're saying that the city is doing nothing to allow encampments to exist, we all should agree on one thing. The streets are no, no place for people to live. What we're proposing today with 5611, I think, is a compromise which allows us to keep our streets open and clear for all, which is what public space and public rights of way are and should be. But at the same time, acknowledging that we need to create more storage. We cannot criminalize a person's status for being homeless. And we are looking for ways, in a very complicated situation, to allow these two things to go exist. So how do we do them? We have extracted and put some language forward that will allow our officers in the Bureau of Sanitation to distinguish between attended and unattended property. Those that cannot have nearby storage are given some leniency because we do not want to say you're going to be penalized because you have no place to put your few possessions. We are also saying very clearly that we do not want to criminalize the mere status of being homeless with the amendments we're making to 5611. There's a lot more to say on that, but let me say this now, that while we're building the infrastructure, we're finding ways to address homelessness. We have a long way to go. And quite frankly, we have neglected our fair share in addressing homelessness, and we are now finally doing that. It's going to be a long road ahead of us, but the actions we are taking today, along with the hard work that has been taking place in committee, we're moving in a direction, I think that we will be able to finally take up our responsibilities as a city to address homelessness. So with that, I'll turn it over to my co-chair, Mr. President, uh, Mr. Council Member Harris Dawson.
The floor is yours.
So much, Mr. President and Mr. Co-Chair. I want to, uh, especially thank the co-chair of our committee for helping me walk our committee through this, uh, process. When I first got to the council, uh, the city needed a law on the books following litigation, uh, because residents were rightly demanding that there be a replacement for 5611. Uh, at that time, we talked about the need to deliberate, to unpack it, to listen to all the voices, uh, from around the city, uh, from our city departments and, and other parts of the city family. We took that responsibility very, very seriously. I think the first, uh, six weeks of, of our time on the committee, we dealt just with 5611. Um, and we had to balance the US Constitution first. Uh, secondly, with the need of basic human decency all over the city, no matter where you live, with the fact that citizens, uh, our parents, our grandparents invested so that we could have sidewalks and streets. And citizens ought to be able to walk up and down those streets freely, safely, uh, and without impediment. And so, um, in what you have in front of you, uh, members today, is the result of a long, 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 long set of conversations with everybody on the, the committee. Uh, I especially want to, uh, call out our, our president, uh, Councilmember Weston, and, um, my colleague, Councilmember Buscaino, who did a yeoman's effort, uh, to have the kind of input on this that would make this a well-rounded, uh, and we think decent compromise, uh, that, again, addresses our ability to remove camp, encampments immediately. Uh, and I want to thank everybody who drove from Sun Valley in San Pedro. I know that's a real long drive to get, get your voice heard. What I, what I do want to tell people is that if you drove from San Pedro, you drove through the 8th District. We have encampments all over, uh, the district, including just 500 feet from my house. So I understand the urgency of, uh, removing encampments. We think that we've put in place the tools that allow encampments to be removed, uh, at the appropriate time, and still respect the basic decency of every human being, uh, that is our charge as a government here in the United States. And so, uh, we've made those amendments. Those are, uh, before you. And, um, I'm, want to turn, uh, turn the microphone over with the permission of the chair to Councilmember Buscaino.
Okay, and we'll do that, and then we'll move to, uh, Mr. Bonin.
Thank you, um, to Mr. Wezar and Mr. Marquise Harris Dawson. Uh, thanks for your partnership and leadership in, um, finding and striking, um, the, uh, proper, um, solution that's both humane and also protecting, protecting those homeless individuals who continue to be victimized in our city today. And this, what you have before you is a part of larger strategy in addressing the homelessness issue in the city of Los Angeles. And we need to, we must do everything we can to help the homeless individuals while making sure that we don't disrupt our quality of life in the city of Los Angeles. I want to thank the number of individuals who spoke, who have been impacted, uh, whose quality of life has been disrupted, but also understand the importance of, of striking a proper balance, uh, between offering a more humane solution and also, uh, addressing the quality of life issues that are before us today. Um, we in the city of Los Angeles, um, can, have to balance that effort to ensure public safety and public health, uh, with, uh, the homeless rights to property. And what we have before us does just that. Yeah, we've come a long way since August, when, uh, this council directed, um, and, and we heard from advocates across the city that it was too harsh. And, um, but it, at the same time, what's before us is really been an effort, uh, to, uh, address those concerns. And I'm really proud of the, of the fact that, um, we, obviously, not, not made everyone happy here, but, uh, it's, it's, uh, it's something that we have done, um, moving forward to, again, strike that proper balance. to, again, strike that proper balance. I brought with us, I invited Senior Lead Officer Dion Joseph. And part of this issue has been the allegations of LAPD's heavy hand. Well, this is, I want to share with you the heart behind the badge, and Senior Lead Officer Dion Joseph, who's worked us, Skid Row, for 17 years, who's housed numerous individuals in Skid Row. And to a point that was made, I believe, by the rabbi of, it's important that we come from the heart and mind in crafting this new ordinance. And I feel that we've done just that. It's helping those in need, but also protecting those who continue to be victimized. And also address the ongoing quality of life crimes that are occurring within some of these shelters, these encampments and tents, including sex trafficking, including drug use, drug sales, including domestic violence. So I feel that it was important to share Dion Joseph's experience in patrolling the streets and helping those in need in our Skid Row. So, Mr., and as a senior lead officer myself, I worked with Dion, and I appreciate your presence, Commander Arcos. I appreciate your presence as well. And just share with us the importance of this ordinance before us and why it's important to address the quality of life concerns and also helping those in need.
Yes, sir. Thank you so much for having me today. First, I wanted to say...
Excuse me for a second. If you're going to yell out again, "Sir," in the orange shirt, you're going to be asked to leave council chambers if you're disrupting the meeting. And that goes for anybody else, for that matter. One more disruption, you're going to be asked to leave. Thank you.
One of the things I wanted to say is, there's a saying that the poor will be with us always. But we should be allowed to keep the poor safe in the city of Los Angeles. Yeah. Homelessness is not a crime. We know that. We know that, we know that, we know that. But we can't deny that the criminal element has infiltrated the homeless community where I serve. And hopefully, I'll be able to prove that to you today. I'll go real quick, I know for the sake of time. I want to talk about four things, several things. Increasing narcotics sales near service providers, tents and encampments giving cover for the criminal element 24/7, increase in overall crimes such as rapes, robbery, aggravated assaults, and property crime, and increase in overdosing. The pictures you see up there is the past. That was 2005. And these are two individuals. One individual who was pulled out of his tent and brutally beaten by gang members over the course of four days. The lady laying down took her last breath as she hid next to a shopping cart and got a strong dose of heroin. She was able to hide and unfortunately destroy herself. I knew both of those individuals. I care about them very deeply. I want to talk about what's happening with the tents. I don't have a problem with the tent, per se. From 9:00 to 6:00, I understand there's not enough housing. We're so for housing, we can't even begin to tell you. But until that comes to fruition, we have to be able to deal with things like this. Inside of that tent, we found methamphetamines and narcotics and money made off the backs of the vices of the people in Skid Row. Right in front of the Union Rescue Mission, a mission that not just houses men, but women and children who have to walk by every day. The mission gave me this footage of this woman who is preparing spice for sale right directly in front of the mission while she hides next to her tent, thinking she's unseen. This is San Pedro. San Pedro and a 600 block. Many of the tents have been co-opted by the criminal element. There are hundreds of gangsters who come from all over L.A. to co-opt the tents and prey on the people. One of the individuals, a few months later, inside of a tent, recovered heroin, methamphetamines, a live firearm with live ammo, and swords. What do you think he was doing with those things, under the guise of homelessness? Next slide. We found another tent, another knife, methamphetamines, and hundreds of dollars made off the backs of the people in a recovery zone where people are supposed to try to get their lives back from drug addiction, alcohol addiction, and homelessness. Here are the adverse effects of allowing the conditions that we know it to exist. Open-air narcotics sales to recovering addicts. I know one woman who lost her sobriety because while she was two days clean and celebrating, a crack dealer who happened to be a drug addict blew crack smoke in her face. And that's all it took for her to relapse. That's wrong. The adverse effect on the mentally ill. I don't have time to dwell on this, but the mentally ill are severely impacted by what's happening. The spice sales in the tents. A mentally ill person, that's not a crime. A mentally ill person being hooked on spice, that's when they become a police problem, when they're hurting other people, hurting each other. And even the best-trained clinical psychologists in the world can't talk them down because of that. They're under the influence. Territorial battles. Many people getting divided, involved in violent confrontation, stabbings because, hey, this is my spot, this is my spot. And just like that, someone could get stabbed. Someone can get their throat cut. The handicap, not being able to use the sidewalk. One of the most disturbing things for me to see is a person in a wheelchair whirling in the street when there's tents completely blocking the sidewalk. That's wrong. Violent assaults with 5611. There are so many items on the sidewalk. I'm reading crime reports where individuals in Skid Row, the people I care about, are beating each other with whatever they can get their hands on. That's wrong. That's wrong. And an increase in overdosing, an increase in overdosing up to 30%. Let's talk about the fire department. I talked to Fire Station 9, wonderful guys there. Fire Station 9 has seen an increase of about 30% in drug overdoses year-to-date. Two days ago, they responded to seven heroin overdoses in a span of six hours in Skid Row. And they're telling me that they're seeing these victims in tents and encampments. That's the majority of their clientele. They're also seeing an increase in spice overdoses. Statistics year-to-date, this is for Area 29 of Skid Row. Aggravated assaults year-to-date are up 44%. Robberies up 46%. But let's talk about one that's very important to me. Let's talk about rape. Rapes are up 171% in Skid Row. Those numbers went from 7 in 2014 to, I think, we're around 19. Year-to-date, in my area, Area 35, which has the bulk of the services, and I'm almost finished, I know I promised a short time. Aggravated assaults are up 71%. Robberies are up 73%. Rapes are up 91%. We cannot on one hand say that we care about women of Skid Row and allow the conditions that puts them in danger. As a matter of fact, if the council will allow me, I hate putting out numbers because numbers can be twisted and turned any which way. I want to show you this, tell you the stories behind the numbers without giving their names and report numbers. But these are the things that happened to the women of Skid Row. I'll do about two of them, just to give you a clear example of what's happening here. Suspect lifted victim off the ground and walked her into a tent where he injected her with an unknown narcotic, causing victim to pass out. Victim woke up and found the suspect on top of her raping her. Victim was asleep, I'm sorry. Suspect got into victim's tent and held her down against her will. Suspect placed a knife to victim's throat and told her not to move. Victim kicked at the suspect and the suspect left. And the last one. Victim was asleep on the sidewalk when she woke up to find the suspect on top of her attempting to remove her pants. These are the things that the women of Skid Row are up against. And if we really care, if we really care like we say we do, we have to take appropriate action. I believe housing is the answer. Every law enforcement officer I talk to, we are right in line with even our detractors. We agree. But until that comes to fruition, I'm a police officer. I came on this job to protect and serve. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you, Officer Dion Joseph. Colleagues, if... Really proud of the effort... Excuse me. Really proud of the effort that's being made here and this substitute motion before us will help us to continue to help those who are being victimized on a daily basis. These are the most vulnerable people who need our help. And if we don't move forward on this ordinance, then we're telling those individuals that we've given up on them. So I really appreciate the input, the subject matter expert between the two individuals here before our table. And thank you for the presentation. And with that, I ask that we move on what's before us and so we can address the disruption of our quality of life in the city of Los Angeles. And also, most importantly, help those who are being victimized in these tents and encampments. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Bonin.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, colleagues. We've heard a lot of loud voices, there's been a lot of volume, and there's been a lot of fear this morning. And while I won't dispute the particulars of anything I've heard about people who are complaining about criminal activity, aggressiveness, drug use, because I live it daily in my district, in all parts of it. Because I live it daily in my district. I really am, to my core, disturbed at the portrait we've just painted of homelessness in Los Angeles. Because it is, while the circumstances and the situations everybody explained are true, it does not adequately capture the range of homelessness in Los Angeles and the humanity. It is not a majority of the homeless in Los Angeles. I had the great pleasure of being able to emcee a celebrating success breakfast that the West Side Shelter and Hunger Coalition put on two weeks ago. And it celebrated the success stories of people who has transformed their lives, the people who used to live in these encampments. And before I say anything else, I want to mention a few of these stories to give a counterpoint to what we've heard. There's a gentleman named Frank who lost his job and then his apartment and lived for three years in a recreational vehicle in Venice. Because he hooked up with services, he is now driving for Uber and is living in a two-bedroom apartment in Long Beach. I met Tiffany, who had a troubled time growing up, became a meth addict, and was homeless and pregnant. And she discovered an organization in Venice called Harvest Home. Today, she is sober, has a job, is living in a home, and is a proud mama to her daughter, Emma. I met Curtis, who was a home healthcare worker and suffered from a stroke. Couldn't work, lost his job, lost his home. He now, because he hooked up with services, is a resident of Tom Safran's Delray Square Apartments in my district. I met Larry, who was an Army veteran, who got out of the Army, got into some trouble, alcohol, and lived for almost 30 years on the streets. He just bought a home because he turned his life around because he encountered new directions for veterans. Those are also the faces of the homeless in Los Angeles. Those are people who are victims of the abject failure of our policy in Los Angeles. Whether you are disturbed by encampments in our neighborhoods because it bothers your conscience and it's sick that that's where we have left people to live, or if you're bothered by them because it affects your quality of life or your property values, you need to be demanding the same thing of this body. You need to demand that we do something different. It's not enough to say, just get them out of my neighborhood. The courts have said again and again, we do not have that ability. The courts have said again and again that this council cannot enforce our way into solving homelessness. We have no choice but to provide alternatives. It's what we should do, and it is what legally we must do. That is why this body today is taking a number of different actions. This body today is poised to create storage provisions in the city of Los Angeles, voluntary storage. This body is poised to take the first major step in creating the $100 million fund. This body is taking the first steps towards appointing a czar and better coordinating the city's approach to homelessness. This council is, whether you agree with the final outcome or not, dramatically improving and stripping away much of the criminalization of 5611. And in this action, doesn't allow attended belongings to be removed at all unless there is voluntary storage nearby. And this council, I hope, today will declare a state of shelter crisis here in Los Angeles. I've referred to it as a state of emergency. A state of shelter crisis in Los Angeles, which will make it easier to open up shelters. It will make it easier to provide safe parking here in the city of Los Angeles. I've actually gotten some pushback from those in the social service community saying we shouldn't be talking about shelters. Everything should be about permanent supportive housing. We absolutely need more housing.
Time, Michael.
Thank you. I'll close very quickly, Mr. President. But until we provide alternatives, until we provide that housing, we need to provide alternatives. And temporary housing is better than a shelter. And a shelter is better than a tent, and a tent is better than a sidewalk. So today, in some of the communications from our committee, we asked that we declare a shelter emergency here in the city of Los Angeles, a shelter crisis, which will make it easier to provide shelter and will also make it easier to provide safe parking programs. I would certainly like to provide that in my district, certainly not asking anybody else to do it in theirs. But we need to make a legal framework so it's easier to do that. I've got hundreds of people living in their vehicles in my district, 200 of them just in the shadow of LAX themselves. Santa Barbara has a successful program.
Michael.
One of our asks today is that we create a legal framework to allow that to happen. It's the first of many steps we need to be taking, but it's important that we remember who this is about today. Thank you.
Mr. Corretts, and well said, Mr. Bonin.
Thank you, Mr. President. And this is a problem that I think all of us realize isn't new. We've had tens of thousands of homeless in the city of Los Angeles for decades. It hasn't been solved partly because it's a very thorny problem and not because we haven't done anything about it. There are a number of programs that have been implemented over the years. I helped to implement one 15 to 20 years ago when Jackie Goldberg had a Hollywood homeless program. We had one in West Hollywood. We combined and created the PATH Center near Vermont and Beverly. But all those good things that have been done have just kept us treading water because this is such a difficult problem. And it's more of a problem now because it's increasing rapidly. It's more of a problem that we all notice because it's spread from just Skid Row to across the entire city. In my district, where it wasn't really a problem for many years, it now goes from Palms to Westwood to Encino. No part of my district is spared, and no part of the city is spared. And if we have the kind of El Nino that we're worried about and we have thousands of homeless in the hills and rivers and other places, this could be a disaster of epic proportion. So we obviously have to take some action. I'm a little bit concerned that we're pledging $100 million. I'm not sure if I see where that comes from. We're not in a robust economic recovery. We don't want to decimate our reserves and leave ourselves in the position that we were the last time we had a severe economic downturn. I hope we can find it. I'm not sure that we can. And I'm not sure if we try to solve this just with money that $100 million is enough. But there's a lot we can do without major spending. Some of those things we're talking about today, safe parking at religious facilities and other places so we can get people that are living in their vehicles off the streets, storage and other assistance to the homeless, creating a homeless coordinator so there's one place with someone who's accountable for this problem. But I think there are a lot of other things we can do that don't cost that much money. One thing we have to do is we have to stop intentionally eliminating affordable housing, which we've been doing for a number of years, by paying inspectors to find bootlegged units and eliminate those units and evict the tenants. That helps nobody, and we've lost thousands of units that way. We need to deal with the Airbnb issue. We don't know whether it's hundreds or thousands of units of housing that we've lost. It's estimated as high as 8,000 units. We need to deal with that as well. And the Ellis Act is being greatly misused to kick out tenants of lower-income units by developers. And it's not being used for the intended original purpose. I think we need to push hard at the state level to change that. We have to push the VA hard to do more, to provide services and housing for homeless vets that they should be doing, and push it as hard as we can. We need to work also, and I haven't heard much talk about this, with some of the outreach organizations that do outreach, to identify relatives of homeless people and contact them. Because I believe that if a relative is willing to take their relative off the street, that's a much better situation than leaving them there. And if we have to pay to reunite them and they live in New York or the Midwest or whatever, I think that's a relatively cost-effective way to help an individual as well. We can do things with job training. There's a lot of steps we can take that'll cost some money, but not that much money. There's a lot of steps we can take that'll cost some money, but not that much money. And I hope we go after all of that low-hanging fruit first. And I think if we do, we can help get thousands of people off the streets. I think it's about time we had this focus. I think we shouldn't pretend that this is a problem that is suddenly just creeping up now. We've been trying to deal with this for years.
Time.
But I think never with this level of focus and hopefully never with the kind of results that we're going to get now. Thank you, and I thank the committee for all the good work that it's done.
Thank you, Mr. Coretts. Mr. O'Farrell?
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, colleagues. Thank you, Marquise Harris-Dawson and Jose Wezar for your leadership on the homeless committee and the great work and heavy thought, deep contemplation and research on what I think is the number-one crises in the city of Los Angeles. Homelessness is many things. Homelessness involves everyone, whether you live in a home or you're homeless, or you live near an encampment or you don't, because it affects us everywhere we are, everywhere we go in the city of Los Angeles. Homelessness is also largely a byproduct of our lack of affordable housing. I've talked about the affordable housing crises since the campaign for this seat. We absolutely must work toward solving the affordable housing crises in Los Angeles. None of these motions today actually identify funding to get to the $100 million. However, I'm confident that we will get there. That's what we need to keep a laser focus on, identifying the funding and spending the 99.9% of the $100 million we identify to build permanent supportive housing with wraparound services for homeless individuals, many, a very high percentage of whom are afflicted by mental illness and substance and drug addictions and alcoholism. That's just the reality, and I do not mind talking about it because every encampment that I visit, those circumstances are present in every single encampment in my district. When I get reports from my field staff, and we go out every single week, and we address encampments across the district, and we clean around all the encampments, we offer services every single time to every individual, rarely, very rarely, does anyone actually accept a temporary shelter or a pathway to a permanent home. That's the reality. We have to figure out how to compel individuals that it is actually better to receive our assistance than to stay on the streets. That's going to take a lot of work, thank you. That's going to take a lot of work, but we absolutely have to do it. It's going to take the building of trust. But I feel that the reason we heard such emotional testimony from the young mothers and the families that are so directly affected by the encampments near where they live is because they have such a deep compassion for homeless individuals. So to judge them for not having the compassion when clearly they're torn to even address the issue is very unfair. Angelinos everywhere care about this issue. I want to know where the county mental health services is. When we talk about temporary locations to allow individuals who are living in motorhomes to park on city facilities, where is the intervention? Where is the interaction? Where is the requirement? Where is the outreach for the issues that afflict many individuals that I talked about earlier? Without that component, I think we're going to go down a very slippery slope. We've got to have that as part of the component when we take a look at that. I am very comfortable with moving forward with all of these issues for a report back. I'm very comfortable with the agreement that was worked out in relation to taking a look at 5611. I think that's a step in the right direction. And lastly, let's keep in mind something. I can mention four specific sidewalks, intersections, streets in the 13th District where currently and for weeks on end, the sidewalks have been completely impassable and completely blocked. In one instance, by a mattress where a prostitute turns tricks, who refuses to move the mattress unless I go out there myself and offer her services. It's a true story. I hear comments and the reports from my deputies of cries in the middle of the night that they get calls on the next day emanating from the encampments in my district. This is a very, very serious issue. Let's not look at this with rose-colored glasses. Let's look at it in a very real, authentic way, because if we don't, we're not really going to solve the problem. And I think that with this declaration and identifying funding and actually working toward building the thousands of units that we need with the services that people deserve, that's the way to go, and that's what we should, as a body, should be laser-focused on. It works. It's the plan that will help all of our neighborhoods, and it's something
Check it out.
that we must do. So I applaud my colleagues for your hard work on this, and I'm with you every step of the way to figure this out, but we've got to do it without the rose-colored glasses on. We have to do it in a determined fashion and not deny the realities out there in our encampments. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. O'Farrell. Ms. Martinez?
Thank you, Mr. President, and I also have a couple of pictures to take a look what some of these homeless encampments look in my district in the San Fernando Valley. But I also want to take time to thank everyone who spoke. I know it's uncomfortable. I know we should never have to hear someone like Ms. Garcia come to our council meeting and cry because she is in so desperate need for help, because she has been completely inundated by what's happened in her neighborhood, including her neighbors. So thank you very much for being here. Muchas gracias, señora, por venir. You know, my district is one of the most, one of the neediest districts in the San Fernando Valley, inundated with things that need to get fixed. And my constituents are not NIMBYs. They're not people who live in, you know, white picket fences, and they're not people. They work really hard. They are the backbone of this city. Some of them break their backs scrubbing floors and scrubbing toilets to make ends meet. And you know what? They were fortunate enough, maybe 20, 30 years ago, to be able to purchase their first home, which they currently still live there. So when we talk about people and it being unconscionable that we're trying to criminalize poor people, well, my district is poor. And I think it's criminal for my children in my district not to be able to play in a safe and clean environment or be able to walk to school through a clean sidewalk, to be able to get to school and home. That, to me, is unconscionable. The fact that our problem has gotten so, so out of control that in some of our communities, like this one-eighth of a mile of Cabrillo Road in Panorama City, these are the types of items we have found. We've now cleaned that area in Panorama City four to five different times. And you want me to tell you how many people were there? 300. And you know how many of those 300 people actually accepted services? Three. So what do we do with the rest of the people who don't want help, who are too sick to be able to accept help, who are addicts that can't function for themselves and cannot access help? What do we do? And other parts of my district, this is human waste. These are barrels upon barrels of human waste that we've collected on Cabrillo Road. You'll see in Outhouse, people get very creative in terms of how they're, or where they're going to the bathroom, but nevertheless, this is what you find in parts of my district. Here's the Outhouse, very, very creative. And on Wingo Street in Arlita, we have pictures of little children being lured into that encampment of over 70 people that Caltrans have helped us clear out. What are children doing being lured into these parts of our city? Why are women not being protected or not being? Why aren't we not addressing that side of what's happening to our city? Where families and children and women in our city cannot access parks, cannot access sidewalks, and feel hostage in their own houses because we have no solution for them? That, to me, is unconscionable. So I want to address item number 14, Mr. President. I actually want to offer a verbal motion because I don't feel that this recommendation has been vetted. Particularly, I'd like to make a motion that we remove recommendations 1B from item 14 and that we send it back to committee for further detail and discussion. This, for me in particular, it relates to the RVs and open parking lots and so on. In parts of my district, we fight tooth and nail to be able to remove some of this stuff from schools and from parks because we have no idea who's living in these RVs. And it isn't safe to walk our kids to the park because we have no idea who these people are. I want to also recommend on item 15 that we ask that we delete recommendation 2 of the location and the location citing and have the report come back to committee in a way that it gives every district onsite an equal size so that we all share the burden and that not all the storage facilities are concentrated in one particular neighborhood, which I don't think is fair. If we are going to be real about helping people help themselves, then we all need to share on the burden of these storage facilities. What I don't want to see is that it all gets congregated in one district in the San Fernando Valley, which is the sixth. That is not fair, and it's not okay. Homelessness is everywhere, and their belongings should not all come to Sun Valley or Van Nuys or Panorama City. So I need that to be addressed as well, Mr. President. And again, colleagues, this is a tough conversation to have, but I also have the responsibility to speak up for the countless of poor people that I represent, hard-working people that I represent. We don't live in luxury. We don't live in fancy homes. Our neighborhoods are, we're trying to do the best with what we have, but we deserve neighborhoods that are clean and that are safe for our families. Thank you very much.
Well, Mr. President, thanks for that grand entrance. Where do we begin? Why don't we start with saying that all lives matter? Huh? All lives. All lives matter. Don't interrupt me. If you're homeless, if you're living on the edges, if you're black or you're brown or any other color, that this city of angels has to do more to address this crisis, and we have to do it now. So let's start with that premise. From there, let's talk about steps forward. I am very anxious about us moving forward. That's what I want to do. We need to start now. There's a clock running. Normally, this is just generally an everyday bad thing. But if you look at the definitions of what an emergency is, all the elements for my satisfaction are met. People are without access to energy, they're without access to water, they're in health dangers for themselves and the community, they don't have shelter. Those are the elements. If we had Katrina, that's what people looked like after Katrina, when Katrina came. An earthquake, that's the way people are going to look. When El Nino comes, that's what we're going to confront, and then we'll call it a state of emergency. We're at a state of emergency now. It just happens to be one that's created, excuse the phrase, but it's man-made emergency, right? We've created through our policies and our practices, et cetera. So I'd like us to figure out how we go forward. You know, 5611, we're spending too much time talking about this because whether it passes or it doesn't pass, whether it gets amended, doesn't get amended, it really doesn't matter to the thousands and thousands of people sleeping on the streets and the thousands and thousands of people who have legitimate concerns about the changes of quality of life in their neighborhood. Both those concerns are legitimate. So I'm satisfied with 5611 because when it started, I saw it as nothing but criminalization and a conversation that was only focused on criminalization. And so we moved from that. We've taken those elements out. We've taken them out enough to satisfy those who have concerns about public safety and those who have concerns about a policy that is going down the wrong road. And that was a policy of 5611. I wrote a piece of legislation, just for example, Mr. President, to address the concerns about drugs and exploitation of the homeless by drug dealers in the Skid Row area. It's called Senate Bill 1318. I wrote that legislation about 10 years ago. Because about 10 years ago, we could have and did make some progress with the idea that there were certain crimes that we could address and should address. That was 10 years ago. But today, we just heard that even with that law in the books, we're unable to utilize it to benefit the homeless. And so we need to move forward. We need to move forward with a certain agency. The last thing I want to say to you, Mr. President, is I want to see the actions that we're going to take today. El Nino is coming. So we need, the first thing to do is figure out, it's not a debate about shelters versus permanent supportive housing versus housing for the middle class versus housing for, you know, new people entering the workforce. That's not the debate. And that's not even the sequence. These things need to happen concurrently and need to happen immediately. The problem is, to build housing in this city is almost impossible. And now we're asking to build housing for some of the most vilified people in our society. That's a small group of people. People come to the city and say, "Build housing." You know what? We don't build housing in the city of Los Angeles. Developers build housing. People like Skid Row Housing Trust build housing. People like, who are building housing for the veterans build housing. We don't do that. And so what we have to do is to create the conditions and circumstances to enable that and to enable that to happen immediately. At the same time, we have El Nino, which is coming. And God bless you, Mike Bonin. God bless you. Because I'm amazed at how thoughtful you are and how focused you are to make sure that when El Nino comes, that we're going to have shelters, that we are going to open up city properties, that we're going to have restrooms and showers, that we're going to have safe places. But I want to do that now. I have a tremendous sense of urgency, and I want to do that today. I know you have a motion, but we need to move that with, what's that phrase that we say to move something super quick? Forthwith. We need to be forthwith on everything on this issue. Because I've got some RVs I need to move. I've got some homeless people I need to bring into a shelter, right? And we need to do that now. We'll do the housing. Mr. O'Farrell, you're absolutely right. We're going to do the permanent supportive housing.
Oh, Gil, Richard, time.
That doesn't happen overnight. Mr. President, let me say one last thing, okay? And I just want to contextualize this. Too much time we're spending on 5611. We have decriminalized it for the purposes for which it was necessary to do that. We have gotten off the track of criminalizing the homeless as part of our conversation for policy and solutions. The bigger picture now, the bigger context is, we are moving with a set of proposals and a new agenda to house the homeless, to shelter them and to house them. And that's a good thing. And we're doing so with also thinking about those who have challenges, real challenges, legitimate concerns and challenges about the quality of life in their neighborhoods. Because at the end of the day, in this city, every person, regardless of your legal status, regardless of how you got here.
Time.
Every person, sir, needs to be treated with the dignity and respect God intended them for. Thank you so much, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Sidiya. Thank you, Mr. Sidiya. Mr. Englander?
Thank you, Mr. President. Some people, no matter what we do here today, whether we declare a state of crises or emergency or any label we want to put on it, will say it's not enough, and it's a little too little and too late, that it's a Band-Aid solution to a major problem where every organ in the body is failing and we're treating it with a Band-Aid. I couldn't agree more. They will say that, and they're right. We have to take measures to move forward, and these aren't huge measures. Whether we declare it, whether we figure out the parameters and set it back to committee and work out and iron out those details of where they're going to be set up and how and what kind of parking programs, which they have to be vetted. They have to be looked at. We have to look at it as a balanced approach, there's no question. Punting it doesn't mean putting it off. But I want to go back to this. This is near and dear to my heart, as I share This is near and dear to my heart, as I shared with many of you. I probably may be the one, the only one around here who was evicted from our home when I was a child, where we lost our only home and became homeless, where then later in life, I lost my first house to a fire. I've been through it and a lot of people are strugglingly out there. And what we did here in 2005, I think, has to be a conversation, anytime we have a conversation about how we're going to deal with this problem here today. In 2005, the city of LA attempted the Safer City Initiative that failed miserably. It was a two-pronged effort, and I put out there that it was failed because it had two major components. One was to look at it from an enforcement perspective of dealing with what we heard from LAPD sitting here early at the table with drugs and alcohol and criminal elements and gangs and guns and knives and swords and rape. And we threw everything at it for 68 weeks, in fact, except that was only one prong of it. The other part was social services, which never materialized whatsoever. We never had somebody out there working hand in hand, walking hand in glove with the LAPD to make sure that they can assess the needs of the people, whether those people had major drug addictions, whether they had mental health issues, physical health issues, whatever those issues might be. Creating temporary shelters or allowing people to park overnight somewhere isn't a solution. It's a Band-Aid. It's needed now and it is an emergency. It's a crisis out there, particularly if you're one of them. It's a crisis, but it's nowhere near a solution. What we need, and you talk about permanent supportive housing, we just opened 91 beds in Northridge. We opened 147 beds, working with New Directions in my district at the VA facility. We should be in Washington. We should be in Sacramento rattling those cages to look at those underutilized properties immediately for permanent supportive housing. But the other part of that is looking and partnering, quite frankly, with the county. It's really become a form of government where we say they're responsible for one thing and we're responsible for another. We're all responsible together collectively in a collaborative effort that's never been done at all. We need to make sure that we work with those folks on the street. You can't just open a door, put them inside, shut the door and think everything's going to be okay, particularly if it's only temporary. Temporary shelters, allowing RVs to park on the street, that doesn't get them help. People need help. So I think this is a beginning of a discussion, nowhere near the end of a discussion, a discussion that is long overdue and one we should have on a regular basis in every single committee because there's not a committee that's not impacted or affected in this city. And this should go to every committee and some element or another on a regular basis for regular input. If we look at $100 million budget or a fund, that might be a beginning. Where the money comes from, we're spending it now on enforcement. We're spending it now. Taxpayers are spending it now. It's affecting every community and every quality of life and public safety, but this is not a diagnosis. It's a symptom. It's a current condition and it's one that's treatable and we're responsible to treat it. Thank you.
Well said. Mr. Bloomingfield.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I certainly want to start by thanking the co-chairs of the homelessness committee and the members of that committee who have been working tirelessly on this. It is such an important issue and the fact that we've had a committee dedicated to looking at those issues is extremely important. But I also want to recognize this is step one. You know, some people, as my colleagues have been alluding to, are saying, "Well, it's not enough, it's too much, it's this." This is just the first step. The issue of homelessness, as we've all been talking about, is so broad and cuts across so many different areas that it's going to take a holistic effort, not just on the city's part, but working with the county and with the state and the federal government. We're out of our wheelhouse on the health issues. Those are generally county issues. And lining up some of the costs of homelessness on society and the benefits in terms of how much you save when you can address those costs is a financial equation we need to figure out, and it's not easy because a lot of the actions that we need to take on the city side are going to create benefits on the county side or on the federal and vice versa, federal, state and city. So how we all merge those together is going to be the key to moving forward. $100 million we're talking about, obviously, we're just creating the fund here, is a drop in the bucket. If, you know, we all talk about housing being the most important thing, you couldn't house your way for $100 million for 10% of the population. So we've got to look at the bigger policy issues as well. You know, the 50611 issue, which we've spent a lot of time on, I think we've moved toward a very decent compromise to move us forward in a direction that can create community safety but doesn't criminalize folks unnecessarily. Now, there are a lot of issues in this and I actually don't just want to speak about it, I want to ask a couple of questions because maybe I could bring the CAO up and the CLA up.
Mr. Santana, Ms. So, if you come to the center.
So we're proposing a lot of major issues here and I want to make sure I understand. I want to confirm that the amendments are not going to change the city's ability to remove bulky items without prior notice. Is this going to continue to be the case?
That is correct.
Okay, because that was, and continue to be the case about when there's a case of crime or contraband, that there's still no impediment in terms of LAPD being able to move in on that?
That's correct.
Okay. Also, the declaration of emergency, there's the shelter emergency, there's a declaration of emergency, there's a number of different ones. I want to understand better, when we do that, does that give the mayor access to unappropriated or appropriated funds without council approval?
No.
It does not?
It does not. So this is a different type of declaration that would be involved. It's not the normal emergency as in the case of a natural disaster of that type. This is under a different government code section completely. It deals with the emergency shelter declaration of an emergency and as it's written here, we would have to come back to the council for any, for additional action before these things could be implemented. The first item, which is under motion 14A, is the declaration itself, but all of the other additional recommendations would be subject to further action by the council before any of these could be actually implemented.
But it says to promulgate issues and enforce regulations that the mayor can do this, that he considers necessary for protection of life and liberty. What are the kinds of examples of regulations that under this declaration, the mayor would be able to unilaterally implement?
Which, are you looking at the committee report or are you looking at 14A?
The 14, the city attorney's report states that the declaration of local emergency would allow the mayor to promulgate various regulations. So there's the shelter issue and then there's the potential issue for a local emergency.
I'm sorry, Mr. Bloomingfield, I don't see that recommendation in here, so could you...
Okay, so what I have here, the city attorney's report states that the declaration of a local emergency would allow the mayor to, quote, "promulgate issue and enforce rules, regulations, order, directives as he considers necessary for the protection of life and property." And so I want to understand what powers we're actually giving the mayor potentially.
Check your time, Bob.
My guess is that you're referring to the city attorney memo that was written. I recommend the city attorney come and speak to that item.
Okay, could we have the city attorney?
And that item does relate to an emergency, like for emergency operations with regard to a natural disaster.
But it is what we're contemplating, both the shelter emergency and potentially the local emergency, which is akin to the natural disaster emergency. I just want to have eyes wide open of what we're, what are we proposing to give in terms of additional powers?
Senior Assistant City Attorney Valerie Flores.
Well, go on and finish, but I got to stop you. Go to current and I'll come back.
Okay.
Okay. Do you want me to go ahead and finish?
Well, why don't we begin?
She can finish her answer. Okay, go ahead.
The declaration would allow the mayor to issue citywide regulations as long as they don't conflict with any existing ordinance, so they could be complementary to or fill in gaps where there is no council-approved ordinance. For example, the mayor could set a curfew for various areas if that were needed, and that's been done in the past. There is no current citywide curfew, but under a declaration of emergency, that's the sort of thing a mayor could do.
Okay, I have some initial questions at that, but I'll come back.
Okay, so we'll defer to Mr. Price.
Should I stay? Okay.
Thank you, Mr. President. I too want to thank my colleagues, Harris Dawson and Jose Wezar, for the extraordinary work that they've done on this the past several weeks and months and also the comments and observations made by, very thoughtful comments made by my colleagues in this discussion. I'm prepared to support the committee's recommendations. I think the time to act is now. I'm almost tired of the talk, tired of hearing the stories. We all have them. We all have the encampments. We all have the sidewalks. We all have the alleys. We all have complaints from neighbors and friends about these conditions. And, you know, the question is, what are we going to do? I think the recommendation from the committee at least provides us with a path, really for a variety of actions that we're going to have to take over the next several weeks and several months, but I think that we have to start taking that action. This is an emergency. This is an opportunity, I think, and certainly our responsibility to be responsive. And, you know, my colleagues have made some, you know, important amendments. I think, you know, we need to consider them further. I'm prepared to accept the proposal, the recommendation that, though, from the committee as it's being presented, so that we can demonstrate that we're serious, that we are on a path of finding the solutions and reaching out in a real collaborative way as it's going to be necessary, not just with council, not just with the mayor, not just with the city bureaucracy certainly, but with stakeholders, community members, nonprofit organizations that are a part of this process so that we can begin to see some movement. You know, there's a gigantic continuum out from emergency to permanent and everything in between, dealing with those individuals who are anxious and ready for some assistance to those who refuse it and who have other issues impacting their decision-making process. And so, again, we have a lot of work to do. Is this a perfect solution, a perfect approach? No, it's one of compromise. And I think we're going to continue having this kind of discussion as we explore our options, as we reflect on the concerns that are being raised by the individuals that we're representing and as we really grapple with our own conscience, as we try to figure out the best way to act to achieve the desired results, meeting the needs that our citizens have for a safe, peaceful environment to live and to raise their families and their kids. And so, Mr. President, I'm prepared to support this and I'm hopeful that this will get us on an expedited path of making a variety of hard decisions that we have to make so that we can address this problem in a way that's both honorable to citizens but also to those we're trying to serve. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Price. I want to go back to Mr. Bloomingfield, Bob. We're going to go back to Mr. Bloomingfield so that you can finish your questioning and I believe we're about ready to wrap this up. So we're going to go to you and then I think Mr. Bonin and I'll go to Mr. Harris Dawson to close. Mr. Bloomingfield.
Okay, so Ms. So was explaining to me some of the issues offline a little bit, so I also had a question about the safe parking program potential. The municipal code 1400 says deemed public benefit projects could provide for trailer parking on sites in philanthropic institutions. Would this, using this code section, require us to have public hearings and include an appeal process? Would a public hearing still be required if there is a declaration of a shelter crisis? Or would that be able to be done unilaterally?
Adrian Corosani, City Attorney's Office. 1400 provides public benefit uses. That process would be the same, so it's an entitlement through the planning process. It would be maintained, there'd be ability, you'd have to pay for the entitlement, there'd be appeals as it currently exists. Parking programs pursuant to the declaration of a shelter crisis would be different in that when the city declared the crisis, if those programs have been implemented into our code, they could be triggered to be utilized upon the declaration of a crisis. There would not be a hearing for a site to be used or any separate application that would be required. It would be a program that could go into effect upon the declaration of a crisis.
So what public process is there to determine which public facilities would be used or which wouldn't be used?
So for the, if the code was amended, that would be the public process for the city to create that kind of system for those, for any site that qualified under the amended code.
I'm not calling. So when you say the code amended, the code's amended, so we have a safe parking program. There's a shelter crisis that triggers the use of it. Now the question is, where do those, where do those public facility, public benefit parking lots exist? Is it just every public parking lot or is there, how do you discern which ones are appropriate, which ones are not?
That would be a policy decision for the city council as to how it wanted those programs to operate. So, for instance, right now, we don't have a program that exists and the way that our current shelter crisis ordinance works is sites are cited, they're named when the council is considering the declaration of a shelter crisis. And so when you do declare that, those sites appear on your motion and that, and the public is aware of what those sites would be. If the shelter ordinances were amended to streamline them, to take out those requirements, then it would be up to the council as to how it wanted to design a safe parking program, for instance. Would the council want to retain the requirement to...
So what we're doing today, directing the city attorney potentially to look at that and to come up with that, does not activate any particular parking lot. It just, it directs them to come up with a plan that we then have to approve in terms of specifically where those RVs would be parked, et cetera.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Bonin.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, colleagues, for the discussion and thanks to staff for explaining a few things. As I close, let me just clarify a couple of things, which I think just got explained, is there has been a discussion about a state of emergency and there's been a discussion about a state of shelter crisis. The city council itself is not unilaterally empowered to declare a state of emergency as we think about what happens in the wake of a natural disaster. Would and we could, and be urging us to do it today. That authority rests with the mayor, which we would then have to ratify. What we are, however, empowered to do is declare a shelter crisis. We do it every year when there's a winter shelter program. We have, however, tied our hands, not us, but our predecessors tied our hands in a fairly ridiculous fashion. The state allows us to do a lot for the entirety of the year with a shelter crisis, but the city has an enabling ordinance, which basically says we can only declare a shelter crisis from November through March and puts a whole bunch of restrictions on it. By declaring a shelter crisis, what we're asking today in the report from the committee and in 14A is that we start giving us ourselves the full authority that we have under state law. Give us the maximum authority to do what we want by declaring a shelter crisis. One of the other specifics in here, which has caused some confusion, is the safe parking program. Now, Ms. Martinez and I tend to agree on almost all issues, although we have a very, our districts are extremely different. But the slide she showed easily could have been my district. I have actually a much larger homeless population. That looks like Westchester near the airport. That looks like Venice. That looks like parts of Pacific Palisades, believe it or not. One of the things that we can do is create a safe parking program. I am not proposing that we open up every parking lot in the city to every vehicle willy-nilly. I am not proposing that we mandate that you have safe parking in your district, though I would certainly encourage you to do so. What I discovered when I worked for Mr. Rosendahl... What I discovered when I worked for Mr. Rosendahl, when we tried to create safe parking, is that we don't essentially have the legal framework to do it. And what Santa Barbara does, and the kind of program I would encourage us to do, and that's in a separate action, we're not doing it today, is they hire a social service agency that runs this program for them. And they take a bunch of lots, churches that have volunteered, businesses that have volunteered, city lots that the city council specifically designates, and allows three to five, sometimes six or seven cars, to park in those lots. Not anybody, people who are enrolled in the program, who've gone through the background check of the program, and who are on a track to housing. It has worked for about 10 years now. I'm happy to take anybody up to go see it. But we're not creating that today. What I'm asking today is for us to create the legal framework, so that as we work to craft that program, when we craft it, we can do it. Because right now, it is going to take some time legally to do it. Some of the ordinances need to go before the city planning commission, for God's sake. It's a ridiculously long process. So what I'm asking today is that we create the legal framework, so that willing philanthropic institutions or religious institutions, or this city, if we want to, can create such a program. And that's something that we're working in homeless committee on, and that Mr. Santana and Lassa are both working on. So just wanted to clarify that.
Okay, Mr. Sadio.
I just want to concur with what Mr. Bonin said with respect to the safe parking program. It's not a one-size-fits-all. I need it. We spoke about this yesterday. I need it like yesterday. Mr. Bonin needs it, but there are other areas where it's not appropriate. And so I think that's something that we need to, as we go forward, we need to start. My great sense of urgency is for us to start immediately with those willing and able, and that we should craft our legislation appropriately. So there are other areas where we have to do everything uniform, but this is one area where I think that one-size does not fit all, and we need to move forward with this and do so in a way that can position us as Al Nino comes, is to be positioned to be able to address those concerns in our districts and do so today. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Wezar.
Thank you, Mr. President. To, just want to remind ourselves that we have, or in the committee, we are working on a strategic plan that we hope to bring to council in January that will complement and work with a county who's also coming up with a strategic plan on how they, on a new approach to address homelessness. What we've attempted to do today is just bring some items that we want to get some immediate action, those items that we want to start moving forward with and not wait until the strategic plan has been completed. But it's quite clear to me, as we're moving forward, that we are not dealing with two very alarming issues, and one is the number of homeless individuals that have mental health issues, and how some of those items are not within the city's purview to address. And that's why working closely with a county and our strategic plans is going to be so important. What's also alarming is the huge gap between the available resources for affordable housing and the need out there. And those are two real dramatic issues that we will have to have much more discussion to continue to move forward. This was a very good conversation to have with the full council, with the public. These are the types of discussions that have been occurring in the committee, and as we move forward, today's attempt was to at least bring to the full council some actions that we could immediately start addressing. On the issue of declaring a local emergency, I want to reiterate Councilmember Bonin's words, which is, we are not declaring, unfortunately, a type of emergency that brings in resources from the federal government and the state, such as occurs when a natural disaster occurs, that we would see a triage be set up and immediately start helping folks. I wish that's something we could do. But within our purview, we're using what's available to us to create and move forward on declaring a local shelter emergency that will bring us some immediate benefits. And hopefully through this action today, we'll come back with a resolution that would allow us to declare that emergency. And finally, on 5611, the status quo or doing nothing will not benefit anyone, those who disagree with it, and those who agree with it and are asking us to do more immediately. It will only make matters worse. What we have before us is a good compromise. Not only that, but the federal government, we are at risk if we do not act on anything on 5611 by the 19th of this month, by losing federal funds if we do not act upon it. So we have to act upon it and move in a direction that provides homeless individuals some relief from being termed criminal simply for, by being homeless, but at the same time, moving immediately to start cleaning up more of these encampments. And coupled with this is we just approved in this year's, last year's budget, additional funding for the sanitation department to immediately and be able to go out and clean up more encampments, work quickly. And finally, this will at least give some sense to the Bureau of Sanitation, our officers and the public about where we stand right now with respect to cleaning up encampments. There's a lot of confusion out there. This will definitely start clearing up the picture. Thanks for your attention on this, colleagues. And Mr. Englander, I agree with you, this is a discussion that needs to be held more often with a full council. It's a type of discussion that helps, occurs in the committee, but these are some very important steps, and I look forward to having a more fuller and broader discussion when the strategic plan comes to council in January.
Thank you, Mr. Wezar. Mr. Harris Dawson.
Thank you so much, Mr. President. And thank you to all the members who participated in this conversation. I want to, as a way of closing the conversation, ask our representative from Lassa, Peter Lind, to come forward and just give us general context based on what we've done, what we're proposing to do here today, how that sets us with regard to the overall picture for dealing with homelessness in our city.
Thank you, Councilmember Harris Dawson, President Wesson, and other council members. I'd like to just offer a sort of a federal context for this discussion in a couple of different ways. One, over the summer, the Federal Department of Justice weighed in on a case in Boise, Idaho, that they were not a party to, to submit a statement of interest in arguing that ordinances that criminalize sleeping in public spaces where there's inadequate shelter constitute a violation of homeless persons' Eighth Amendment rights to be free from cruel and unusual punishment. This is an unusual step for the Justice Department, and it shows federal attention to this issue. But more pressing to us is HUD's clear articulation of its opposition to criminalization of homelessness. This week, Lassa is submitting the Supernova application on behalf of the Los Angeles Continuum of Care. It's over a million, $100 million of homeless assistance funding. It is a renewal for most of it, but it is a competitive renewal process. We are not guaranteed the funds. We are competing against other continuums of care across the country. It is vitally important that we focus on what they're asking us to do and what they're alerting us that they're not going to fund. We need to be aware, when they add language about a specific area, that it is an important step. So I want to just take a second and read the language that they added this year to a section that we score points on traditionally. It says, "Continuum of Care," up to two points, and I'm going to focus on the point scoring in a second, but up to two points to continuums that demonstrate recipients have implemented specific strategies that prevent criminalization of homelessness. It goes on to say, "Applicants must describe how they are reducing criminalization of homelessness." So there is a, there is both a level of effort and an outcomes and actions component to that. Significant amounts of our federal renewal funding are at risk if we pursue a course that HUD has stated in opposition to. And I want to just focus in on the, for this purpose and for other purposes that have already been stated, we would strongly encourage the council not to adopt and/or to eliminate or revise elements of ordinances that criminalize homelessness. I do think that the ordinance in front of you significantly does reduce that in the motion that was put forward, and I think it's an important one, it's an important measure to adopt and to step forward with. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And so I think we'll wrap up our conversation with just a review from the CAO on where we are. I know there's been a lot of back and forth today about amendments and proposals and counter proposals. So if you could just give us a summary on what is before us, and then I'll relinquish my time.
There are five items before you. The first one is 14, and it's, there's been a substitute motion regarding, so, excuse me?
An amendment.
An amendment, correct, regarding the issue of the state of emergency and other related items. Item number 15 is a report that was adopted by the homeless committee regarding the expansion of storage capacity throughout the city, and specifically in response to issues, concerns raised by Ms. Martinez. The intent of the direction is to ensure that storage capacity is in fact throughout the city, not just concentrated in one part of the city. The goal is to identify those areas of greatest need, but also to ensure that it's spread out throughout the various districts. There ultimately will be a report back in relation to how that would work. Item number 16, there's an amendment motion regarding the issues of 5611 and directing that an ordinance be brought back, as well as a corresponding protocol, to illustrate how exactly it would be implemented. I recommend that both of those items come to you at the same time. Item number 17 is a motion directing my office and the CLA to continue to work with the homeless committee to ensure that we develop a comprehensive strategy around homelessness. We are doing that in coordination with the county of Los Angeles, so my office and the CLA's office meet regularly with the county, to have a larger strategy around homelessness with a clear understanding of roles and responsibilities and how resources would be identified and allocated. It also directs that we identify $100 million. Your council has essentially adopted the first down payment of that, approximately $16 million has been put aside in a special account for homeless-related activities in the current fiscal year. And then item 18 is beginning the discussion of governance, trying to identify how coordination can be improved within the city of Los Angeles. Further discussion of this would be in the broader report on homelessness that will be presented to your council early next year.
Okay, for an amendment, I'd like to call on Mr. Sadio.
Mr. President, I mentioned this earlier as I was echoing the comments of Mr. Bonin. I think that in this instance, this program, this safe shelter, is a program that I am anxious about, urgent about, but I think it should be a program that all of us, with respect to our communities, opt in. We create some type of opt-in program that's available to everyone who wants to have it, who needs to have it, that they have that option before them, and so that's simply a modest amendment in terms of execution. And then the second is, second, and then the second is that on item 15, just to reiterate the language, because it says citywide, and that we make sure that it says citywide, and in that instance, that the full city has a full obligation to make itself available to participate, and ensuring that we do have all those facilities citywide.
Okay. Okay, with that said, there are no other speakers on the queue. I just want to say, members, I cannot remember when there have been this kind of discussion in this city, on this council floor, where related to the homeless crisis. I think that we have sent a message, that we are serious about this, and that today's actions are a very important step in the right direction. So with that said, how should we move on the votes, Madam Clerk? We're going to just take them in order?
Yes, Mr. President. The first one would be Councilmember Martinez's motion, seconded by Mr. O'Farrell, to remove item recommendation 1B and refer it back to the Homelessness and Poverty Committee for item 14.
I thought that's handled. Well, Ms. Martinez?
No, I was referring to 14A. But I could, I'm, 14A, I can agree with Mr. Sadio or Mr. Bonin that it'd be, that there'd be an opt-in clause, and I can support.
So let's deal with, Madam Clerk, can we deal with 14?
Yes, Mr. President.
Okay. So let's vote on 14 as amendment, as amended?
Item 14.
Okay, if you want to reference it, I mean, I said as amendment, as amended, and you're talking about 14A.
Mr. President, that would.
No, that, we're not, we're not there yet. We'll explain it. We are, it's my understanding we are not voting on that motion because of the actions that I think were going to take place here and another action. So if we can get through this moment.
Mr. President?
Yes.
So there is actually a 14A on the desk. Ms. Martinez is requesting that 14A be amended.
Okay, so let's prepare to vote.
She is asking that, she is asking that 14A be amended. But, excuse me, excuse me, gentlemen, thank you. But my point of clarification, 141B takes care of my original motion. Right, so that. So I can rescind? That would amend the recommendations for five and six on 14A. Correct. To include an opt-in. Correct. Component. Thank you.
Okay. Let us open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Okay.
And just for clarification, Mr. President, that is item 14 as amended by motion 14A, which has been adopted.
So that brings us where?
Item 15 is a motion by Councilmember Martinez to delete recommendation number two and refer it back to the Homelessness and Poverty Committee.
Let's prepare to vote. Let us, Mr. Wezar?
I'm not clear, are we deleting that? This is Ms. Martinez's motion to delete item B from?
To remove item recommendation number two and refer it back to the Homelessness and Poverty Committee for item 15.
Item two.
Yeah.
Item, this is item 15, recommendation number two, which is to adopt the location criteria for the citywide expansion of storage and services presented in finding number six of the CEO and CLA report to address how potential sites for new facilities will be assessed and options for the implementation of short- and long-term facilities.
I'm just wondering if Ms. Martinez is still on her amendment, or if that's before the floor?
Yes, my concern still remains the same. I want it to be referred back to committee so that we can ensure that storage facilities are being identified throughout the entire city, and not only my district, your district, or Mr. Bonin's. Can we do that with an amendment? Okay.
Yeah.
Accepted? Great, thank you.
Citywide.
I just want to make it very clear.
Okay, so we put that citywide, yeah, just amendment to say it's citywide, right? Okay.
In every district, 15 districts. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
So let's vote on this as amended. Let us open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Okay, now, let's go to item 16. Madam Clerk, are there two votes?
Yes, Mr. President, for item 16, a substitute motion, 16A, has been circulated. Council should first vote on whether to substitute.
Okay, on that issue, that question, let us open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Okay, now we will actually vote on the item as amended or substitute it.
Yes, Mr. President, on the actual motion, 16A.
Let us open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Mr. Buscaino.
And if I respectfully ask that this, the new ordinance come to Public Works Committee since it falls within the Public Works jurisdiction as it relates to public spaces?
Okay, well, why don't we wait till it comes back? I wouldn't have a problem with that. We can dual refer it if need be. That brings us where?
Item 17.
Okay, let's prepare to vote on this item. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Let's move to item 18.
Yes, Mr. President.
Let us open the roll. Let us open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
We'll send all of these items forth with, Mr. Buscaino, I will double refer so that you will get that item today, and we want to thank everybody for coming down and sharing their thoughts. Okay, that brings us, Mr. Bloomingfield, are we, is it 21?
Yes, Mr. President, for item 21, a motion has been circulated.
Okay, we have cards on 21, Mr. Walsh, Ms. McAllister, and Mr. Barajas.
This is going to trigger a lawsuit, what just happened.
Let's stay on the item?
Item 21, another alcohol onsite consumption. The other was, this is the Barber Lounge. Now, if you go to Topanga Canyon Boulevard, right now, you have to travel 50, 60, sometimes 80 inches to consume alcohol. This will bring it down to one inch. And again, I say it, I say it to Mr. Rue, when you vote on this, you will have the blood of black people and brown people on your yellow hands. You sold us out, and now you are infesting our neighborhood with alcohol, you scumbag.
Okay, so I believe I have Ms. McAllister. No, no, you're disrupting the meeting, Mr. Walsh. Okay, let's be respectful of the next speaker, Ms. McAllister and Mr. Barajas.
Thank you, Mr. President. As you and all of you, some of you said today, the reason we have, one of the reasons we have this big homeless problem is because of drug addiction and alcoholism. We don't need to be putting more bars and alcohols in our city. That's probably why a lot of people are on the street. They have substance abuse problems and alcohol problems. What we need, we need jobs. What I have been seeing here in Los Angeles is racism, white supremacy racism. You go to any business, whether government, private, and you see illegals, Hispanics and all of these people.
Mr. President, she's not talking about this matter.
Who are working, and I don't think we need any alcohol. And people who are unemployed, they tend to get depressed, and that's why I think one of the reasons a lot of blacks who are having problems are homeless, they're getting depressed. So they're starting to drink more alcohol. We don't need any more alcohol. Everywhere I go in the grocery store, alcohol, alcohol. Alcohol brings prostitution and all kinds of vice into neighborhoods. Build some housing. We don't need any more alcohol. Now, another thing, this alcohol cell onsite consumption at Barber Lounge, we don't need that, okay? Even Caucasians are drinking more than, well, most people are drinking more because the economy is really bad right now, and people are trying to get their frustrations out through alcohol and drugs. So let's concentrate on that 77 million you didn't use from HUD to build housing, okay? That's unacceptable.
Mr. Barajas.
Well, I agree with just some of the comments was that if you live in a evil environment, people tend to go the way to hell, shall we say. Alcohol, I am totally against this measure, and it's true. Studies are showing that from 44 to 55-year-olds, there's, there's an element of overdose, whether it be alcohol, drugs, but it's reflective of the conditions that we are, we are in. I should, I, I want to say that no one should tolerate the fact that consumption of alcohol is, should be some sort of activity that a collapsing society should have. It should be, it should not be tolerated.
Okay, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
That brings us where?
Mr. President, that brings council to general public comment.
Okay, Mr. Walsh, Sean Murphy, if he's still here, Mr. Barajas, Blair Beston, if she's still here, please come forward.
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org, J. Walsh Confidential. I don't know if you saw what happened on Thursday. The mayor sent, Mayor Garcetti sent a letter to President Obama. It's, you can read about it at HuffPost Politics or at my website, opening the city of Los Angeles to at least 100,000 Syrian refugees. I think we'll also need about 100,000 additional FBI agents, but what I want to say is I agree. And the first place, the first five Syrian refugee families should move in with the mayor at his official residency. Maybe 10, maybe 15, maybe 20, because the Syrian refugees are coming here in an explosive way, invited by Mayor Garcetti.
Thank you. So right now, I'm looking for Sean Murphy, Brian Barajas, Michael Lindley, Dr. Josh, if he's still here, and I think it's Nick Previsic or something like that. Mr. Barajas, the floor is yours.
Thank you. First off, I hope you guys will adjourn, although I think you guys are fully aware of the Paris attack and in the memory of the victims of that event. I think one of the things that our organization is pushing at LaRouche PAC is the very fact that we actually have, with others, have warned, if we did not expose the fact that Bush and Obama have tolerated the rise of these terrorists and facilitated money and weaponry. We're not going to get the fact that we have to throw this element out of this, whatever you want to call it, we don't want it to exist anymore. I can say that we do have Mike Ravel on the case, and anybody should look into the 28 pages, which reveal the fact that the Saudis were, and still to this day, funded terrorists.
Thank you, thank you. So do we have Michael Lindley? Michael, okay, now let me go, Nick Previsic, Ruth Sarnoff, Don Garza, Patrick Hart. Please, Ruth, you can come on down.
My name is Ruth Sarnoff. I think I wanted to suggest that the mental health teams be the first responders in all parts of Los Angeles, including downtown. I would like to do so because I believe that, based on everything I've heard this morning, that 5611 is alive and well still as of today. The power to decide when and how to use that power appears to be in the hands of the LAPD and the mayor. I'm, I'm happy that you're working and progressing on some of the immediate housing and safety issues, but it's a very tiny step that's being taken today, and I hope you'll be flexible because almost everything you're going to be asked to make a decision on is going to come as being very counterintuitive.
Thank you. Thank you so much. So do I have a Bill Watkins, I think it is, Bill Watkins, or Patrick Hart? Mr. Watkins?
Thank you. Whoops. Hi, whoops, it's been a while. Hi, District 14, my district, Deanna and everybody. Mr. Sedia, hello, thank you for being here and for talking about the homeless. I'm formerly homeless, 13 years sober now. Hard for me to find a job, because I was a great teacher, I had this great education, but I have a big gap. So in addition to housing, I hope we're looking into jobs for the homeless. The, the city jobs listed, they're nothing for me, nothing for us. And if you look at some, a group like Chrysalis, nonprofit, they're, they've got pedestrian street cleaners. It's a great group to study what they do and incorporate that with the city. We need 20,000 a year, part-time, 40,000 a year, full-time pedestrian street cleaners. You get, you help the homeless and you help our city, which is so dirty for me in some of the areas I walk in, talking about trash, gutters, storm drains. And by the way, we shouldn't have a party in the city until we fix those issues. Don't put the cart before the horse. God bless you all, appreciate the service.
Thank you. And did I have Mr. Previn? Patricia McAllister, please come forward, and Antonio Ramirez, please come forward. Yes, ma'am.
Mr. President, I think this council has a lot of nerve to allow illegal aliens to come in here, people who have broken into this country, hiding under 18-wheelers and whatnot, to come in here and tell us what they don't want in their community. They should have been arrested and deported. The problem we have is all of these illegal aliens have been smuggled into this country. There are 11 million right here in California, 35 million countrywide. They've been smuggled into this, into this country by these Zionist communist Jews, and they're hiring them. Look even in your chamber, nothing but Mexicans working. There is no policy in hiring blacks now. Everywhere I go, city government, all the offices, I see illegals, and they're four or five generations of illegal children. That is the problem, and until you address that, but I'll be darned if I allow you to kill the black people, the 80% you got on the street, and your children will be one of them soon, too. God gave you already a warning.
I'll just call the next speaker. Ms. Ramirez?
I vote for El Jefe, Donald Trump, for his old-fashioned, basic sound and solid principles that will guarantee the restoration of our beloved America, including homelessness. Donald Trump El Jefe is a deeply fervent patriotic American in his heart and soul. He exudes that refreshing, capitalistic, free enterprise spirit and expressed with genuine liberating, fact-finding, and with truthful language. Donald Trump El Jefe will liberate all legal law-abiding Americans, including our beloved U.S. military warriors and heroes and aviators from the bondage and shackles of the racist, hate-mongering, wetbacks, and chanko Latino gang-banging filthy thieves and pussies, and the Latino gang epidemic and the canist criminal enterprises and monopolies. He will also shut them down by deporting them at full throttle with no amnesty, no asylum, no safe, no safe haven sanctuary cities anywhere in America, with the exception of Guantanamo Bay. God bless America.
Thank you, thank you. Your time has expired. Thank you so much. Madam Clerk, that brings this body where?
Council has motions for post and referral.
They are posted and referred?
That clears the desk.
Okay, announcements, members, announcements. Mr. Price?
The Economic Development Committee will meet in one half hour. Economic Development in one half hour.
So that's, you'll be meeting at approximately 2 o'clock?
2 o'clock, yes, sir.
And what, what, what room?
We'll be in the usual, where are we?
10:10?
10:10.
Okay, 2 o'clock, members. Mr. Bloomingfield?
We're scheduled to meet at 2 o'clock in San Pedro. It's our field hearing. We, I'm going to say 2:15, I think gives us enough time to get there, so that'll be 15 minutes late, San Pedro, 2:15.
Talk to Mr. Buscaino, he has a shortcut.
We're not against it.
Mr. Harris-Dawson?
We'll convene in the Board of Public Works Room, the Planning and Land Use Management Meeting at 3 o'clock.
Okay. And any more announcements? I do not see any. Let's all rise for journey motions. I'm looking to my right, Mr. Weezer?
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, I'd like to move, ask that we adjourn today's meeting in memory of John Lyle Miller, a great individual, great activist in the Egorock area of the city, just a wonderful individual that had a lot of light and warmth to him when you approached him. He was born January 12, 1936. He passed away on October 18, 2015. He was the only child of Harry and Hazel Miller. He was born at Queen of Angels Hospital, Los Angeles. His parents moved to Egorock in 1939 when he was three years old. He attended San Rafael and Dahlia Heights Elementary Schools and Egorock Junior and High Schools. He was president of the, president of the Egorock Valley Historical Society, president of the Kiwanis, vice president of the Egorock Chamber of Commerce, deacon of Egorock Presbyterian Church, on the board of the Food Center and Blue Ribbon Committee, among many other charitable organizations. In the 1950s, he was cameraman for Channel 9 News. He and a classmate, Buddy Newman, did a film documentary on Custer's Last Stand, and he also did The Happy Wanderer. He also worked at Ernie's Camera Shop for 34 years with his loving wife by his side, part-time. John was married 45 years to his dedicated wife, Sue Ann. He, his best friend Bill, and wife Faith Faltz, were, with sister Amy, were like peas in a pod. All were very close friends for all of these years. He will be missed by the Egorock community. He leaves behind his wife, Sue Ann, his two nephews, Jesse and Paul Nelson, and all those who knew and loved him. I will certainly miss him at every community event where he attended and welcomed everyone and did things for the community and helped preserve Egorock's history by doing annual calendars and sweatshirts and T-shirts and just reminding us all of how great of a community Egorock is. He will be missed. Thank you, Mr. Price.
Thank you, and I do want to acknowledge that earlier today, Ms. Martinez led this, this council, and our, directing our thoughts towards those in Paris. Are there any other adjourning motions? Mr. Sedia?
Yes, I'd like that we would adjourn in the memory of Father Peter Lambert, former board member for the Wall Lost Memorias Project. Peter was a Greek Orthodox priest here at the great San Sofias, on the edge of my district, a very opulent and glorious building. He lost his son in 1996 to AIDS, and as a result of that, in his work with the Wall Lost Memorias, he founded Philanthropia. It's the first ever AIDS ministry in the Greek Orthodox Church. He served the poor, the hungry, and those who were challenged. He gave his life to his family, his parish, and especially the Greek Orthodox LGBT parishioners who loved him and who found comfort in his ministry. He's survived by his wife, Sophia, and his children, Carrie and Perry. Thank you.
Any more adjournings? I don't see any members. This meeting is adjourned.